Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening. And welcome to the Exeter Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, March 27, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Nowak Room of the Town Office Building located 10-Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. If you don't know where you are, that's where you are. And tonight, we need to introduce ourselves. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board, and to my left is...
You want me to speak?
Yes.
Aaron Brown.
Thank you. What's your position?
Vice Chair.
Very good.
Gwen English.
Nancy Valantra, Select Board Representative.
And we have a couple alternates.
Marty Kennedy.
Dean Hubbard. I'm an alternate.
And Jen Martel.
And handsome town planner down there, David Shopples.
Keeps everything going. First, I'm going to ask Dean to act this evening. And of course, Marty will, you can act on the first thing we're going to deal with. And then, I believe you're going to, if it comes appropriate, you'll step down for... So, I'm going to move minutes to the end of the meeting to speed up the process for you good people. And it doesn't make our evenings any earlier, by the way. So, and we first have to deal with the StoneArts Development Site Plan Review for the property located at 111, 112 Front Street. And that is Plan Case Board Number, Case Number 42-17. They've asked...
24.
24. I said 42. Huh? Well, I was close. Even number. So, they have requested to have their case extended to the, our next meeting, the 10th of April, 2025. And I'd ask for a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Voice vote is fine. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion in a's. Abstentions. Motion carries. So that one will tuck away till next time. So we're going to have a continued public hearing on the application of green and company for the site plan review and wetlands conditional use permit, cup for proposed mixed-use to non-neighborhood development mud project consisting of townhouse development off Haven Lane and 32, 32 three-bedroom units, a four-story mixed-use building at Portsmouth Avenue having 4,418 square foot of commercial use on the first floor, and 36 one-bedroom units above, and one separate duplex structure with three-bedroom units on Haven Lane, along with the associated site improvements. Subject properties located at 76 Portsmouth Avenue in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District is tax map parcel number 65-118, and is planning case number 24-8. And I'd ask Dave if he might start us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to recap, the applicant presented their proposal originally at the December 19th.
Just a minute. I want to...
Whoops, whoops. Good.
Marty would like to...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would have accused myself when I happened to previous...
Thank you. Excuse me, Dave. Go ahead.
No problem. The applicant presented their proposal originally on December 19th in 2024, and subsequently, a sidewalk was conducted on January 9th. The applicant then returned to the Board at their February 27th and the March 13th meeting, and now they're before you this evening. As I previously noted, the applicant did return to the Conservation Commission at their February 11th, 2025 meeting, and presented their redesigned plans for the conditional use permit. The Commission voted that they had no objection to the wetlands conditional use permit application and recommended two conditions of approval, which I have here, which were provided in your packets at the last meeting. A second technical review committee meeting was conducted on March 27th, and a comment letter from UEI and TRC were provided to the applicant and were included in the fourth last meeting packet. The applicant has submitted revised plans and supporting documents dated 3/19/25, and that's what's in your packet this evening. Just going to spend just a minute going over what I remember being discussed at the last meeting. There were several items discussed that included traffic, sidewalk access, construction hours, hydrant location, one access point versus two access points. So regarding traffic, the Planning Board agreed to forego a full traffic impact analysis and instead impose an exemption as agreed by the applicant to offset some of the cost to coordinate the signals on Portsmouth Ave between High Street and Alumni. I did speak with Electric Light, who does our signal work. They estimated that connecting these three signals, equipment, labor, preparing a timing plan would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 7,000 to 10,000 per signal. So you could do two or three. So, you know, it was in that ballpark. To this end, the applicant has agreed to provide the town with $20,000 toward this effort. I believe this is more than fair. And while the applicant is going to, you know, save money possibly by doing a full traffic impact analysis, $20,000 easily represents their proportional share if we were to do that. I mean, I think it would be a fraction of that if we did an analysis and saw the impact compared, the impact that this development's having compared to what already exists. Sidewalk access was discussed, and it appeared that there was a concern that the lease in the front of the parcel could possibly prohibit pedestrian access on the proposed sidewalk that runs from the Haven Lane side of the development to Portsmouth Ave. I mean, I think that can be easily handled with a condition of approval, should the Board, you know, get to that point, take that direction. Construction hours were also discussed by an abut, and it was requested that the Planning Board restrict the construction hours to beyond the town's current ordinance. I told the Board at that time, and I still believe that the Planning Board should not impose any conditions upon that because that is a Select Board policy, and they have, I don't believe the Planning Board can override the Select Board on that. And, but I did say I'd reach out to the applicant to see if they would voluntarily restrict the hours. They have agreed to, they sent me an email saying they would restrict the hours from 7:00 to 7:00 daily and only inside work on Sundays. Right now, it allows 7:00 to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, no, you know, no restriction on indoor or outdoor. So that's what they were willing to do. Regarding the hydrant location, the Fire Department did review the plans. I said I'd get back to you on that. They did review the plans, and they're happy with the relocated hydrant. The applicant, and finally, the applicant is requesting two waivers from the Board's Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations, and their waiver request letter from Jones and Beach Engineers dated 1/13/25 was previously provided. That's all I have now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. For yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paige Libby with Jones and Beach Engineers. Here also with me tonight is Attorney John Bozen, as well as Jenna and Michael Green with Green and Company. So like Dave said, we were here two weeks ago. We had quite a bit of discussion on traffic. We did also bring you at the last meeting a revised site plan. So what you'll see in the resubmitted plans is pretty much identical to what we presented at the last meeting, a few very minor modifications. And then, the complete set was resubmitted in order to address the comments that we had received from Underwood, most of which were pretty technical, a lot of details related to utilities and things of that nature. So nothing that affected the site plan too much. So if you recall, some of the changes that we had made were to break up some of the building facades by adding additional jogs to the buildings, as well as especially break this building into two. And the other major change to the site plan was also to widen some sections of the road in front of the buildings that have no parking spaces in front of them, just to allow additional turning space for vehicles to get in and out of those garages safely without backing up immediately into traffic. So one of the big things that came up at the last meeting was that the Board wanted to see some renderings of what the buildings were going to look like, so we've prepared those for this meeting. And if you do have your site plans in front of you, it would be helpful to have them just so you can look at the building numbers when I present them, because it's a little hard to tell which buildings we're looking at. So this first plan is just basically a top-down kind of 3D view of the development. So it's kind of upside down, but this, basically, this is the sidewalk that heads out toward Portsmouth Ave. These would be the Haven Lane lots, and then this is our first entrance, and this is our second entrance. So it's kind of just upside down from the site plan that you have.
All right. Thank you for the orientation.
Yes. That one's a little bit confusing. The second one is the view looking in from the westernmost entrance off of Haven Lane. So what you're looking at now is Building 11 on the left there, and Building 2 on the right. Building 1 is a little bit set back behind these trees, so you can't see it from this And then, this is kind of a zoomed-in version of that exact same viewpoint. So if you were to walk down that road, this would be the view again of Building 11 on the left. Building 2 is there on the right, and this is the Building 1 that I was just referencing, which was kind of set back a little bit behind those trees in the first view, so you can see it more. So you can see that Building 1 has a slightly different roof line than the rest of the units, and that's because it's the shorter unit, as we discussed at the last meeting. That's the 30-foot height versus the 35. So this view is looking at, this view is facing Building 1. So standing as if you're kind of in front of Building 11, just facing that Building 1 at an angle. So again, this unit, it's pulled forward a little bit because of the jogs that we created, and this is the shorter unit. It just looks the same height because of the, the angle that it's taken at. And then Building 2, you can see there on the left. So this view is looking in from the easternmost entrance, so the entrance down at the end of Haven Lane, standing almost like you're at the end of Haven Lane, and this would be the building on the left-hand side, which is Building 7. And you can kind of see Building 6 a little bit in the distance. There's some green space between the two, where the mailhouse will also be. So this is Building 3, just standing in front of it, facing it at an angle. And Building 4 would be to the left of it. That's partially cut off. This one is Building 10. So you're standing facing it. The sidewalk is there on the right-hand side that runs between the two buildings, and you can see Building 2 there on the left facing kind of out, as if you were going to go out the easternmost entrance.
Oh, okay.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you go back? I'm having a hard time orienting myself. Can you just repeat where we are on this one?
Yeah, so this one's standing in front of Building 10. You can actually see at the bottom of the screen here, you can kind of see the view.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. I just figured that was going to be kind of small on the screen, so I figured if you had your site plans in front of you...
So those buildings on the left, it's hard because the plan is upside down from the plans I'm looking at on my screen.
Exactly, yeah.
The buildings on the left are Building 2. Okay.
Correct, yep.
Got it. Thank you.
So then, this is the view kind of facing down the sidewalk, away from Portsmouth Ave and toward Haven Lane, between the two buildings, which would be Buildings 8 and 11. So you can see how the sidewalk runs down between the buildings and goes out toward the sidewalk that kind of runs perpendicular with Haven Lane.
Okay, yeah.
So this is the view of Buildings 8 and 9, kind of standing as if you were behind the mailhouse area, which also has some green space and some stairs down through the retaining wall towards the trail that we're proposing.
Oh, okay.
And again, you can see it down on this little vicinity map, where the arrow sits, that's where the photo's being taken.
So that's down by Building 6?
Um, it's, yes. Yep. Building 6 facing 8 and 9, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, this is the view, it's not super realistic, of what will be around on Portsmouth Ave, but it's as if you were standing on the sidewalk facing down from Portsmouth Ave into the site. So these would be the buildings. This doesn't take into account grades or anything like that, so obviously, there's, you know, a huge ravine that runs behind these buildings, and the thirsty moose would be here on the left-hand side.
So that's 4 and 5, Building 4 and 5? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, if you back up for a second, 2, as I look at it, to the left will be the thirsty moose?
Yes.
And the right side will be the...
Would be our new proposal.
...large house, a commercial building and apartments upstairs. Okay.
Correct.
Yep.
So then, this is the view looking from the lots that are behind Building 8 on Haven Lane. So you can see right here, this is facing into...
Building 8, just a minute. Oh, okay.
So again, you can see the roof line on this unit on the left-hand side is lower than the rest of the roof lines, because that's the 30-foot height.
How tall is that fence?
The fence is 8 feet, and these are taken from eye level. And then, this is looking at the back of Building 1. So again, taken from the abutting lot on Haven Lane. That would be Building 1. And then Building 11 is in the distance.
So there is a fence that goes along the property line, basically?
Yeah, so the fence runs the perimeter of the property line, coming in on, all the way along Haven, the entrances on Haven Lane on both sides, as well as the easternmost entrance on the side with the abut, and then it runs along the rear property line of all three of those abutters. And it makes a corner and kind of runs behind...
How far along that property? Let's see now, we're looking at the back of the side of house, of the number 1, I guess.
Yes.
Bonnie?
How far does that fence go towards, towards, well, follow Bonnie Drive, I'll say.
I'll go back to the overview plan, so I can show you.
Map along.
Oh, yeah.
So the fence starts here, at this property line. It follows all the way around here, comes all the way down this property line, and then it comes up this property line, follows this one, makes a turn, and then it ends where the forest kind of restarts.
Okay.
So essentially, any area that we're clearing for the development, we're proposing a fence. And you can see it better on the site plan versus on this plan. It's not shown. I can flip back to any of them if you want to see them again.
Fence would probably be a good one.
Which one?
If you can, the fence one. Is that, are you able to do that easily? The fence, how it...
Oh, the actual site plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
If you can do it easily.
Yeah, here we go.
Yeah, so it starts right about here.
Yeah.
Comes around the corner, comes along the property line and down, starts back here, comes up the property line, runs all the way down this property line, and then all the way back down.
Okay.
So what will, let's see, 11 Bonnie Drive? That's partly fenced?
Yep.
But there are...
This one, I believe?
There's existing vegetation that will be staying there, or are they going to be looking into the...
So there's, so we didn't previously show the house on that lot, so we did add that to the plan just to show the proximity of the house...
Appreciate that, yeah.
...to the development. So there's quite a wide area of trees that are remaining in that area, which is why we didn't propose the fence. We basically ended the fence almost close to the wetland buffer, because we're avoiding as much wetland buffer impact as we can. So we're keeping many of the trees that are in that area, and then this area also has trees on their property. So that's why we ended the fence where we did.
So you know, do you know what type of trees are? I remember being there on the sidewalk, and I remember, I don't remember being a lot of evergreens. Felt like it was more, whatever they're called, the ones that drop the leaves.
Yeah.
Deciduous.
Deciduous. I was going to say deciduous, but I wasn't sure.
Deciduous, that's the guy.
I think it's more, you know, taller pines, maybe, that the...
Yeah, there are some taller pines.
Yep.
I don't think we have any of the existing trees types called out.
I knew you'd know.
But again, we are planting along, we all are still planting along this wooded buffer that's remaining. We are adding some landscaping in there as well.
Do you have a detail on that?
We, um, I don't have a rendering on it, but we do show it on the landscaping plan.
Okay.
Some additional trees being added in that area.
You know which one that is?
L1.
L1, yes.
Do you have a detail or spec for the fence that's being proposed?
We don't have it on the plan, but it's a stockade, just a white vinyl fence, like it's shown on the rendering. We can certainly add a detail to the plan set. So you can kind of see on this landscaping rendering, these aren't exact locations of the trees.
Those are existing trees that you're circling around now, right?
Exactly, yeah. So the existing trees were shown just to show that the, those will remain in those areas.
Are you going to add those three trees that look like umbrellas?
Yeah, the red ones, and then the little green ones, yeah.
And on this plan, where does that fence end? Right around the red tree, the last red tree?
Yeah, exactly, behind Unit 1.
Can you go back? I can't remember if there was a view kind of looking at Building 3 and 4 from, there was one from like the thirsty moose side, but I was wondering if there was one from the other side.
I think there was one of Building 3.
3 and 4. Take me far, here's 3, okay.
Yeah, so this is Building 3, and then 4 would be to the left of that.
Building 4, 3, uh, 4, building 4 has 3 units, and Building 3 has 4 units, yes, okay.
Yep.
And that's the separation between them.
I'm curious about the choice of, like, 3 and 4 have the balconies facing the driveway and facing the rest of the community, and then 5 and 6 have the balconies kind of on the back side facing the woodland. And I'm just curious, the design decision for flipping those?
Yeah, so it's mainly just because the, the view behind Building 3 and 4 is the thirsty moose, so not necessarily the best. You know, their dumpsters are right there, they're parking. They do have some, some nice evergreen shrubs that are tall along their property line that'll stay, because those are on their property. So that's good, but that was the reason behind the decks on the front side.
Do you have a, can you bring up a picture of the view from the entrance off Haven, looking in between Building 11 and Building 1?
Yeah.
Again.
So that's kind of the closer view, almost at the intersection, you know, the intersection between the driveways. And then, there is one taken slightly further back, almost like you're at the intersection with Haven Lane.
Great, thank you.
So that's, that's Building 1 on the right?
That's actually Building 2, which is...
Oh, that's 2, okay.
Yeah, 1 is set, in this view, 1 is set back a little bit in the distance, so it's kind of hidden by the trees. That's why we added the second view that kind of shows it more.
Yeah, all right.
Just because of the way that the, the buildings are jogged with that curve coming
Can I, can I ask a question? This is, I'm kind of jumping ahead of what I was planning on asking, but while you've got that up. The distance between the front, or the roadside, I guess, of Building 1 and Building 11 is about 60 feet, which is, in my mind, a lot of pavement. And if you put a, some kind of a, just to break it up, if you put a, like an island in, like a long island in the middle, it would still give like 30 feet between the fronts, or whichever, I guess those are the fronts of the buildings. But like plenty, in my mind, to get out of your garage or your parking space and turn around. Is there a reason why you wouldn't be able to do that, or... Is there a reason why you wouldn't be able to do that, or...
Yeah, so we did add, I think Jen was the one who brought that up a little bit at the last meeting.
Oh.
So we did add a couple of islands in front of buildings one and 11, just to break up the facade a little bit and maybe add a tree. But to, I think you're saying to run an island almost like...
Yeah, right down the middle. So it would be easy for plowing, it would not be like an obstruction, it would be...
Are you saying like down the middle here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would, it would definitely obstruct cars backing out, because in order to actually back out from a 90-degree parking space, you really do need the full 22 feet. So on either side of that island, we would have to have 22 feet. So it would actually create a lot more pavement if we were to add something like that.
Must have mismeasured, because I was thinking it would be 30. Well, probably not 30, given the width of an island, but I don't know. It just is such a huge expanse of pavement, and I didn't really, I, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you've put, you've broken it up a little bit with the, you've got three trees in there, but, gosh.
Yeah, the only other...
Just a lot of pavement.
The only other way around it would be to make the spaces, like angled, to short, you know, shorten the overall width, but in front of a garage, it just, it doesn't make sense to do angled parking, then it's more of a one-way kind of situation.
It is also porous pavement in that area.
No, I realize, like visual, it's still going to produce heat. It's not going to be, I mean, it's, it'll act the same as non-porous pavement, right? Because it's black, it's going to be absorbing heat. I'm just thinking of that as well as just the visual part of it. And you think people, I mean, they've all got garages, you think they'll, I mean, it's hard to predict where people are going to park, but...
They would probably mostly be parked inside the garages, but if they have a visitor, it's, it's convenient that the visitor can just park right in front of their garage.
Hmm.
What's the, what's the gray hashed area between unit 35 and 33, 34 and 33, and building 11?
OV1?
Just kind of a...
OV1?
Building, sorry.
Building 11?
Yep.
34 and 33.
Oh, that's just an open area between the two units.
Okay.
That doesn't need to be a parking space.
No particular treatment or anything, it's just really the same as, same as the rest of it? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and these, these spaces won't actually be striped. It'll just be there for, for the visitors to park in front of the garages, so there won't be like a striped spot there. It'll just be open. That's, we just did that to indicate that the adequate parking size was available.
Could we do another island there?
I got it.
To help kind of address Gwen's concern about it feeling like a sea of pavement?
Yeah, we could look at doing an island there. We tried to avoid islands as much as we could, just because they become a, kind of a nightmare for plowing. But we can, we can look into that.
Where? Where are you looking at an island?
Between, building 11, between unit 33 and 34.
There's one spot there that's kind of striped between the first unit, and the other thing we could potentially do is, well, we can look at it, because we may be able to shift the parking around to just narrow it up a bit.
So, okay, I'm, keep going on this issue.
Sure.
Given that there is a lot of space in between the two buildings, building one and 11, is it too claustrophobic to bring them, or maybe to bring building one in a little bit? That way you'd be getting it out of the buffer, which is one of my other concerns.
We wouldn't be able to, because otherwise we would lose that parking in front of those, those units, because of the way that the road, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, wrong page.
Has a curve?
Yeah, the way that the road is curved, the units are sort of following the curve of the road, and just allowing for the, the size of a parking space there. So if we pull the building closer to the road itself, it would be, we'd be losing those spaces.
Well, you've got to maintain two-way traffic down through the middle.
Correct.
Yeah.
Somehow.
Right.
People are driving slowly.
Right.
Yeah, that's true, but at the same time, you know, if there's no one coming the other way, you can use the whole...
Yes, yeah.
Whole driveway.
Yep.
It's a driveway.
It is.
It's not a road.
Yep, you're right, yep.
So, to me, personally, I think the vehicular needs supersede the need for an island in that area, to me. I mean, having people, having a little more room on either side when they're negotiating gives them more room to avoid someone potentially backing out of their garage into them.
Right.
And I think that's, for me personally, that's a bigger concern. I, I...
Yeah, yeah.
I personally prefer the layout the way it is.
From a safety point of view, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's already porous. It's really not that much extra. I, I, you know, from what we discussed tonight, I think some enhanced plantings along the fence, along the Bonnie abutters, that will work with the existing plants, because I appreciate you trying to keep what's there.
Mm-hmm.
But I think some enhancing would make sense there. Something more evergreen, you know?
Yep, we can take a look at that.
But I, I wasn't clear on the, what Mr. Plummer brought up about the hashed-out gray part. What is that, again, on the plan?
I think what he was looking at is there's a...
Yeah.
Space right here, that's just striped.
You have a couple of them, right? Is there another one down on building one?
Yeah, there may be another one, let me take a look here.
It's in front of...
Yep, there's one in front of building three.
Building three.
And again, those are just to indicate that...
Is it extra?
It's just, it's just basically extra space that we didn't, it could actually be another parking space.
Because you're not striping it, is what you were saying. So that's all just kind of just helping us analyze the plan, correct?
How many parking spaces we are proposing.
Got you.
Exactly.
All right.
They only need one per unit.
What, they have a garage?
Yeah.
Right, so do you have a lot of extra that way?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
And that's, that's...
I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
That's a potential planting opportunity, though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
For beautification. I mean, having some greenery in front of the building isn't terrible. Some people do it with potted plants anyway, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Have they, are they done with their, are you done with your slideshow presentation? Yeah, that's all, that's all we had that's new. The only other thing I had, I was going to add, Dave already went over, which was that we've discussed with Dave, the contribution for the traffic and the construction hours, and we're amenable to both of those things, as he outlined in his memo. That was the only other thing that I had, that was new information.
So, while that's up, Dave, I had a question for you on that. So if I'm reading your memo and listening to you properly, on the contribution versus, I guess, kind of versus the traffic study, you're seeing seven to 10 per signal, three signals?
Yeah, possibly up to three signals.
So...
I mean, there was talk about including the Portsmouth Ave High Street, that is pretty good distance away.
It is, yeah.
I mean, it, it's nice to have them all coordinated for, for flow, to try to get, but, you know, then sometimes when you coordinate them and you go to a timing plane, you're just, you're just kind of moving the congestion somewhere else, you know?
Move it up to the bandstand.
So, so we got to be, like, you know, we have to look at it a lot, a, a little bit further, before we can determine exactly what that improvement should be.
Okay.
And where it should be. But I kind of wrote, I suggested, because it was a little bit broad, but included kind of from this, from this site to Portsmouth Ave, and includes that light. So that's kind of the focus area, because that's where this development's going to impact the most. And that's where it should go.
Okay, so...
In that area.
If, if we're thinking three light potentially, potentially, so we're talking at 21,000 to 30,000 cost, essentially, if that's what it is, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that was a complete wag, you know, on, on electric light. I mean, they started at five to six, and then ended at seven to 10, so I, I always took the high.
Yeah.
It sounded conservative.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, I thought that, the 20,000 from...
Well, it seems much more than fair, as a contribution, frankly.
Correct. That's what, yes, I agree.
And this construction hour part, seven to seven, potentially Monday through Sunday, with work inside only on Sundays.
Correct.
Do they generally not work on holidays?
I would say they generally don't. I mean, we'd like to have the option open, but generally they don't.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I know we can't dictate that, but I, I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, and it's right in their backyard.
Were you going to tell me you didn't hear Riverwoods every holiday?
I hear...
I know you did, because I did.
...five minutes, so I know what it's like. Listen to that rock splitter constantly.
Oh, goodness, yeah. I think the challenge there, Guanlo, is just in reality of construction...
Yeah.
You know, their reality is, running a business, if they're paying for a holiday, they're paying a lot of money for people to be there on a holiday, right? So they're running a business. They're not going to try to do that. They're probably only going to do it if they're at a point in construction where they need to get to a better endpoint, to finish that piece, versus letting it, you lose ground sometimes if you don't finish part of a job.
Understood.
So I think them wanting flexibility on that does make sense. And I do think that, you know, labor's pretty hard to get on Christmas Day.
Yeah. Well, yeah. No, I, I don't disagree with that. It was more just a...
Yeah, I understand.
Question about what's, what to expect. I'm looking at the TRC and the UEI notes from March 19th, and I, there are a few questions I have.
Sure.
Can we go through that? And the first one is actually with a point, the first point, 51, and it's talking about New Hampshire DOT's regulation not allowing driveway flares within the right-of-way to break the plane across property boundaries. Can you just go over that?
Yeah.
Because it seems like the technical review committee reviewed that, and then kind of refuted their stance. And I'm just wondering, who, who has the upper hand in that? Is, I mean, is DOT going to be content with your response and technical review committees?
Yeah, so DOT doesn't actually review this, because this road is urban compact, so it's up to the town, ultimately. I think what happened was, maybe there was a disagreement at TRC between DPW and Underwood, so there, we were unclear on which way it was supposed to go. And we, to be honest, I still need to probably ask Paul Blassich how he wants to see that.
Okay.
No, he's fine with the way it's drawn.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, I asked him.
There we go. That's the answer.
Okay.
But what they're referring...
He didn't, he, he's like, no, that's fine. He disagreed with UEI, for whatever engineering reason, I cannot say. But, you know, he was, he was fine with it.
Okay.
And so, and I talked to Steve Cronin today, too, the director of public work, and he said he was also...
Can you, can you just show quickly what it is?
Absolutely. Yeah, so what he's talking about is right here, the driveway, the flare of the radius for the driveway.
So it just cuts that?
Yeah, it doesn't go onto the thirsty moose's property, but because it crosses the plane of that property line...
Okay.
DOT, when they issue permits, they typically don't like to see that. We originally had these, the, the spaces and the driveway flipped, so the parking was on that side, so we didn't have that situation. But in order to create kind of a better situation with the parking having direct access to the commercial space, we flipped the two. So we felt this was kind of a better layout overall.
Okay, great, thank you.
That makes sense. Yep.
On number 55, what guardrail was removed? Was that up on Haven, or was that somewhere, like where, because the first snow storage area was behind the guardrail?
Yeah, the guardrail itself wasn't removed. There's a couple sections of guardrail, which are just kind of pressure-treated, just in front of parking spaces, where we have some grating for drainage in a couple spots. And we had snow storage shown behind it. So all we did was we removed the snow storage from those areas, as they wouldn't really be able to plow beyond the guardrail.
Oh, okay.
So the guardrail itself is still there.
Oh, I see, the guardrail's there. If I had read that more carefully, I would have seen that that's what, exactly what you said.
No worries.
Number, what's clearing? Does this impact wetland? Oh. Clearing limits, oh, gosh. I think I'm looking at 15, well, I'll go back to that, because I can't read my writing.
I can read it if you want. I can.
Because I can't decipher what I'm actually trying to say.
Okay, got you.
I'm all for porous pavement, and I, I was thrilled to see that, I know there's pros and cons, but I was happy to see that you were using that. But then I read the notes, and there were a lot of concerns about porous pavement on the site. And I, I mean, you've answered the questions, you've done your best to try to allay our fear, our worries in the towns, but I'm, I'm just nervous about it now. It seems like the depth to the water table, high water table, is not great in some places, and...
Yeah, so we, what, the comments mainly surrounded, in our original plan, there was some kind of areas, patches of standard pavement here, and I think there was one in here as well.
Yeah.
In areas where we didn't have the required separation to water table, between the bottom of the filter, which is really just, it's not that we're in the water table, it's just that a certain amount of separation between the bottom of the system and the water table is required in order to provide adequate treatment...
Yeah.
Per the New Hampshire stormwater manual. So in order to alleviate that, because they were concerned basically about maintenance, you know, how are you going to maintain just a patch of porous here and there? So what we did was we just made one large section of porous, and then these areas would be standard pavement. So there's no, like, patchwork anymore. It's just a section of porous, a section of standard. And there'll be signage where the porous starts and ends, so that it's clear.
Okay. The areas that they were, seemed tight, that they were worried you might not be able to get equipment in to clean, where are those?
I think what they were referring to is just in front of some of these islands, actually. So the areas that have the islands have a doorway in front of them. There's like a five-foot section for people to access the door, so to get into, into those areas.
Okay, okay. All right. I'll run with that. Number of trees, on 67, it's on page six, "A number of trees were shown at the edge of porous pavement. Consider minimizing the planting of trees, or at least planting of deciduous trees near the porous pavement. Reduce maintenance and potential clogging." And it's, you, you replied that you proposed, the proposed trees have been moved further away. So they have been moved and not eliminated.
Correct, yeah.
And where, is it, it's hard to pinpoint where those are?
Going back to these pages. So I think they were in this area.
Okay.
And then some of the ones closest to the islands there, they were just shifted back.
Okay, so they're still there, all right. This is an architectural question. On page seven, the, the comment to you was, "No, no narrative was provided, and they will not, and they still do not meet the guidelines." I'm just curious, what, were they specific about what guidelines were met or not met?
I think that we, so we did provide the narrative this time, which does outline each of the criteria that are in the MUND zoning. I think one of the biggest things was that on our, I'll flip to actually the, sorry, a lot of pages here.
I can take that, I know what that was. I know what that was. That was my comment, right?
Yeah, that was your comment.
I didn't specify what it was.
That was mine. The front, the front building on Portsmouth Ave, you know, among, well, the biggest thing was, didn't have the two-to-one ratio on the windows. So they have to be twice as high as they are wide, and it kind of gives a different look. And they were square, they were kind of, you know, they weren't two-to-one.
Okay.
So I knew that, and then there was a couple other issues in the beginning, and I said, provide a narrative. So now they did, and they changed those windows.
Okay, simple, okay.
I have no further comments on the, on the architecturals now.
Okay.
But I did.
I assume the elevations, I think at the last meeting, one of the plan sets that we had gotten, the buildings were still at 40 feet in the Phase One project. Those have been corrected to 35 is the max, right?
Yeah, so we submitted a couple examples. The examples were, one of the buildings that has, that's all 30 feet, one of the buildings that's jogged, 30 and 35, and then one that's all 35, just to show what they're going to look like.
Okay. All right. Can you explain, on page eight, it's the proposed sidewalk. That one was, that was confusing to me. So I guess.
Yeah, so again, that kind of goes back to the question about the flare. So what happened was, because this radius gets so close to the Thirsty Moose property line, there isn't room to connect the sidewalk from here to here with this Phase Two. So what we've proposed is just a crosswalk there, so that they can connect to the sidewalk out front of the proposed building.
That's easy.
So we've removed that connection altogether.
All right. I read that a few times, and I was, I was confused.
Yeah, I read that as like an elevation change when I read that, and I was like, I can't, it can't be.
Confused, too.
Now, how's that gonna work with Phase One? The sidewalk's just gonna end?
No, we, so we proposed it on the Phase One plan, just to connect. So it'll just go right straight in, and then when they build Phase Two, they'll just have to remove that small section.
Oh, right, because you're not doing the radius yet.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Got it.
So it works, it works well on Phase One.
So that will go through the Portsmouth Ave on Phase One?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
And we showed that on the, on the phasing plan as well, the section to be cut out. It's just a very small section right here.
I have more questions, but I'll bow out for a few minutes.
Nancy?
Yeah, so while we're there, I just, I'm still not clear on number nine, on page eight.
Number nine.
The last sentence is, oh, sorry, classes are important. We're open to dedicating this strip of course with that, that is the subject of the parcel to be part of the public right-of-way. Can you just show?
Yes. So on C1 is probably the best spot to view it, where there's not too much going on.
Actually, I'll just try to see.
It might be hard to see from here, too. So there's a section of our property, if you look at the abutting property's property lines, the front, this kind of solid line with two dashes, it doesn't line up with our property. And that's because our property jets out a little bit into Portsmouth Ave. And that's because at one time, when Portsmouth Ave was widened, all the properties dedicated a certain amount of land to Portsmouth Ave in order for it to be widened. This was the only property that didn't, because at the time, it was a gas station of some sort or some other type of use that had things there. For that reason, they could not dedicate that strip of land. So we've been trying to coordinate with DOT in order to just deed that land to them, so that it cleans up the right-of-way for the future capital improvement projects that the town would like to do.
I wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. Any questions, Dean?
No.
Okay. Just want to be sure you're still there. Jen, how are you doing down there?
The grading within five feet of exterior property line, where you're motion, can you just show where that is?
So on C3, which does show the grading, we have it, we have it along this section where the sidewalk runs along the property line. We have it around this property line, as well as along these as well. And the reason for that mainly is to install the buffering, as well as make sure that the drainage still functions, because there's drainage coming onto the site from off-site. So kind of grading a swale in here to collect the drainage and transport it across the driveway, and continue to maintain the connectivity to the wetland that flows through here as well. And then to install the buffer plantings along this area, the fence as well. And then, the other big reason for it is that this right-of-way strip is only 40 feet wide. So by the time you have a 24-foot wide road, curbing, just grading in general, excavation to install the select materials for the road itself, you're pretty close to getting to the 40-foot total width regardless. So that's the main reason why we have that waiver request. And we will be installing silt fencing to prevent any silt from crossing property lines, and construction fencing where properties are uphill of our property, so we don't have to worry about erosion onto their properties as well, to make sure we don't cross any property lines.
The section of sidewalk that you have going along, directly along the fence, adjacent to the two Haven Line properties between the entrances, yeah. Would it be possible to pull that sidewalk off the fence, so it's not like directly at the fence? I know you have some drainage going on there and everything, but it just seems like, I don't know, I think it would be, it would feel more comfortable, I think, from the adjacent, I mean, I know there's a fence there, but like, I feel like it would seem more comfortable to have, not have a sidewalk directly adjacent to the fence if you don't need it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's an eight-foot fence, so like, even if people are walking, they won't be able to see over it on the sidewalk. We did put it there in order to make the room for drainage. We can look and see if we can shift it, but there's also the row of trees that are along it as well, so that'll help shield the houses themselves from the abutters, along with the eight-foot fence.
Yeah. I guess I'm just wondering, maybe you could like flip the fence with the sidewalk, if the grading worked, but it's probably, might be tight.
Yeah, it's pretty tight with the, with the grades for the, for the culvert there, as it comes across the road.
What, what function, or which way is the water gonna be flowing with that culvert there?
So the culvert come, the water comes across these properties. It'll come down into the swale, go through the culvert outlet on this side, and then it'll come down here into the wetland, as it currently does today, and go through another culvert before it gets to the wetland. So it'll kind of follow almost the same flow path it does today.
Otherwise, you'd end up with a swale.
Correct, yeah. And it has to, it can't be a swale, obviously, across the road itself. It has to be a culvert. So we are putting swales where we can, but, you know, culverts to cross the sidewalk
We haven't talked much about Phase Two, but I know there were some changes, or I think there were some changes mentioned to the sidewalk, maybe? Like, could you kind of walk us through?
Yeah.
What the changes were and why they were made?
Yeah, so originally, we had, in front of this building, I'll go to this plan, actually, instead. So in front of this building, we had a sidewalk, and then the street sidewalk was sort of disconnected from it. And the MUND requirements require an eight-foot wide sidewalk. And so instead of having kind of two sidewalks, what we proposed is to widen the sidewalk that's along Portsmouth Ave, which seemed more in line with what the MUND requirements are looking for, and instead had our accesses to each door off of that sidewalk. And that way, that can also be done during Phase One.
So customers for the stores would pull in a drive there and park on the end of that building and do their shopping. There's no parking in front of the stores?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they would park kind of in this vicinity and then walk over to the stores.
And then the residents would park in the back, probably?
Correct, yeah.
So is there like a resident entrance in the back? Is that?
Um, yes, yep, there's another door in the back. And some of the park, some of the parking also overlaps. So like, when people are gone during the day, people are utilizing the stores more.
Okay.
So people could park where, you know, when they come to the stores, they don't, it's not limited to residence-only in the back or anything like that.
Okay.
You have like, storage, elevator, stairs, utilities, trash area. Can you explain like how that works? Like, how does trash get picked up? Where the utilities are?
Yeah.
Where's the elevator?
Yeah, how will trash be handled for the stores?
I'll flip over to the floor plan. So this is the floor plan for the first floor, so the commercial space is in front, and then mechanicals, utilities, storage. So if you go back, I'll go back to the site plan now. So we have a loading area down at the end. We used to have it kind of in the middle here, but basically, you know, it'll be private trash pickup, so the trash will all be stored inside in those rooms. And then the trash collection company would come in, pull up here, back up to the building, come and pick it up, and then turn around, and they'd be able to leave.
Is that gonna serve both the stores and the residents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so that can be used for loading for the stores, or anything like that as well.
Do you have any curbing along the back line, along, at the far, well? Curbing along? Right, across, across, right there. Well, right there. And I'm asking that because you've got signage for no plowing and no dumping snow, but I don't, I don't know that that always works. So I'm just, I was thinking either fencing or some kind of curbing that will keep the plow from?
There is a guardrail in that section as well.
Oh, there is a guardrail?
Yeah, because it's such a steep slope there.
Yeah.
And we do have curbing as well.
Okay, so you've got both?
Yep, we have both.
All right.
And there'll be a retaining wall in most of that section also.
Okay. And signage. All right.
And how does the water flow off of that building? Go on down.
For drainage?
Yes.
So we have some underground detention chambers in the rear parking lot.
Okay, yep.
And then we have two filtration systems also in the back. So it'll go into the underground detention to be detained, to slow the runoff down, and then it'll go through those treatment systems before outlets. There's a small one up in the front as well, a filtration system, for some of that front
Can you explain the culvert in between that parking area and building, building five? I'm still worried about that. It's like 10 feet away approximately from, from that, I don't know how to describe that formation, but I'll call it a ditch.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm just, I'm concerned that if that, if we get, I know you've done some improvements to that, but if there is a real, a serious rain event and there's, is soil gonna get washed out and creep, that channel creep ever closer to that building?
Yeah.
It just seems like it's really close.
Yeah, so one of the big concerns, I think, at the sidewalk was the fact that this 48-inch culvert is coming in, and it's sort of perpendicular to the stream itself versus, you know, parallel with it, as you would ordinarily see a culvert going into a stream or a swale, and it runs parallel, versus coming in perpendicular and kind of eroding away the backside of that channel. So what we're proposing is replacing the culvert that runs across the backside of the Thirsty Moose, and tying the two culverts into a structure, which will allow us to add an additional outlet that does flow parallel with the stream. So that'll prevent future erosion from happening. And we have prepared a drainage model that has all of the off-site runoff coming into it, that'll be reviewed by the town, to size those culverts up to a 50-year storm event. So we're sizing it for quite a large storm event, from a runoff perspective.
Okay. All right.
Anything in particular that's being done, whether it's been washed out in a kind of gully down there? Is that gonna be treated as well in some fashion?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have, we'll file a wetland permit with the state in order to, because this, this kind of western, north, or southwesternmost end of that wetland will be filled in for the construction of the sidewalk and that drainage structure. So that area will be kind of cleaned up and restored, just in that little, that little corner where that erosion is happening, as part of the wetland permit.
That's kind of what.
It's also quite a bit lower, like the slab elevation of the building is 13 feet higher than the invert of that, that pipe.
Yeah.
So you'd have to have, you know, the pipe would be well overtopped before it could ever flood that building.
I was just thinking about water washing away the bank and.
Yeah.
Just chipping away at it over the years. That was my concern.
That's a little bit like Over by Hannaford's. The little book that was there is improved and much, much better than it was, yeah.
In looking at your snow storage, I'm, I'm concerned that, one, you don't, it just doesn't look like you have enough. And if I'm missing, on Phase Two, the only snow storage that I saw was at the northern end of the parking lot, like where your, where the trash pickup, the dashed area.
Yeah, so we have some there.
Is there more?
Yeah, we have some in each of the landscape islands as well. So there, there, and then up front as well.
Oh, little areas.
So we do show those areas, and then we do have the note on the site plan that any additional snow would have to be trucked offsite.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think the snow storage in the landscape islands is.
Seems like.
Believable or a good idea. Like, they're so tiny, you've got trees there and plants there, so if you do try to pile up snow, they're gonna die.
Which is the same for a lot of the, in Phase One, in your entranceway, you've got snow storage off Haven Lane along the fence line, which is landscaped, so it's, it's all gonna land on the, keep going up.
Yeah, right in there.
I mean, if you look, if you overlay that with the landscape plan, your snow storage is going on your landscaping. And that's kind of true in a lot of these spots that you have as snow storage. And I don't know how to deal with that, with the one I brought up first, that's along the entranceway off Haven, but some of the others, maybe you need, maybe to move some of the landscaping back in, like, between Building Two and Building One.
Yeah.
Like, move the landscaping toward the wetland a little bit, because you've got snow storage right where you have a tree planted. You've got service berries planted in between, but I don't know, those are, those are gonna suffer, I think, when they get plowed on. So maybe they need to review those again.
Yeah, we can take a look at some better locations to pile snow, you know, before it does get trucked offsite. It's hard to, you know, control where plows put snow.
Yeah, it is.
Once it's constructed, so.
I totally understand.
You know?
But I don't.
We show it on the plan, but it doesn't necessarily always, it doesn't necessarily always pan out the way we show it.
In, in addressing that, I just, I think it's really important that you have as much vegetation as possible that's added to the site. You've got a lot of trees that have come out because of having to clear to build. So if anything, don't remove any of the trees that you proposed, but move them maybe so that they're not, not gonna get damaged.
Would you mind, Ms. Libby, would you mind just reviewing where you put in the snow in Phase One?
Like, showing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, we have some along the entranceway here. Sorry, I'm looking at my plan here in front of me, because I can't see that far. We have some right here, along this driveway and around the parking area, and then along the edge of this building, as well as along the edge of this driveway. And then some in this island, some behind this parking, some small areas on either side of these, the sidewalk, this island, this island as well, and then an area along the mailhouse, pull-off there, and some areas on either side of this driveway as And around, I think I already said it, around this parking. And then we did show snow, snow storage up here as well, just because that's where the town currently pushes the snow for Haven Lane.
So I, when I look at this, and it's not my expertise, but between Building Six and Building Seven would just seem fairly id. Building Six and Building Seven would just seem fairly ideal. I know you're getting close to some of the wetlands on the project in that area, so you'd want to have some kind of treatment potentially for, as it melts, I guess, because it's gonna have automobile waste and salt and everything else on it, right? So, but that just, with the way you're laying out your buildings and the way your driveway lays out, that whole side, if I'm a plow guy, that's where I'm looking to put it.
Mm-hmm.
Just being real, right?
Yeah.
Between tucking, between every little.
Yeah.
nook and cranny, you're gonna say, oh, wait, there's a big, big gap between these two buildings on this side of this property. That seems like where most plow people would want to put the snow naturally.
Yep.
So I don't know if there's a way for you to try to incorporate that into your layout, but you can also handle a tremendous amount of volume there also. So.
Right.
It would probably make the life of the ultimate residents happier and easier to maintain, not having to deal with trucking snow every couple of snow events. And I think the Haven Lane area, the end of that with the town's doing, it makes a lot of sense, too, to me, just as a layperson.
Yeah, no, it definitely makes sense for the town, because they're really, the, the right, the right-of-way in that area is not very wide, and the road is, is very wide.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the only spot, really.
Yeah, right.
I mean.
What was the spot you were saying? Sorry.
Between Buildings.
He's referring to here.
Six and Seven.
You could kind of just show a large, you know, snow piling area, and then here is where the town currently pushes the snow for the road.
Mm-hmm.
So, could I just follow up?
People are disagreeing.
Okay. So you, you talked, some of your snow storage is on, along the butters, and there's a fence there. What about the melting? And is not a concern of flooding people's cars?
Well, all of these properties are, if you look at the grading plan, all of these properties are uphill of our property. So we're kind of in a bowl, so there isn't concern of.
The concern is going the other way.
Yeah, it's, exactly. It's flowing away from them. So as the runoff melts, it'll come, you know, if it's over here, it'll come onto our pavement. If it's over here, it'll come, all the runoff comes this way.
Now, the long strip there between Buildings Seven and Six, that's, there's a retaining wall across, along there?
There are, yes.
Okay. So if snow was pushed up there, that's not gonna, I mean, the retaining wall will hold that right?
Yep, it'll be set back. It's, it's a very small retaining wall. It's only a few feet tall.
Yeah.
And it's set back quite a ways from the pavement. It's kind of, that's, that's there to kind of create some green space for the residents around the mailhouse.
Okay.
So the retaining wall's quite a ways back from the road.
Can you just point where you were just, because I only heard part of that, so it's alongside the area.
Yeah, so that, that right there.
I thought that's where you were talking. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
No problem.
Could you make, make sure that the plantings are all identified on your landscape plan? And they, I didn't look closely to see whether they're all there, but on the northern border, the exit, exit out of, of the project, if you're exiting onto Haven, on the left side of the road, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight, there's a row of seven or eight little plantings, and I don't know what those are.
Yeah, we can try to identify those a little better. I think they are, so you can see, like, closest to the Haven Lane label, you can see the label that says six and eight. So I think those are intended to include those ones. But we can, we can try to identify those a little bit better so that it's clear.
All right, okay. I mean, do you know if those are, depending on what they are, maybe you know what they are, are those going to be tall enough to give the house some relief from seeing cars go in and out? Just the way they're depicted, they look like they may be very small plants and.
Yeah, so the, so the ones that line up with the front of the house, basically up until here, are arbrevidi.
Okay.
So those are tall. And then there's a couple grasses that are further up, just so we don't impede, impede site distance.
Okay, on the other egg, on the other road.
Oh, on the other road.
Yeah.
Yep, those are. Yep, those are, those are taller trees as well.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see a label on those either, though.
Yeah, I think, I think what was intended was you can see the 11 red cedars. That's, I think that's intended to include those 10 trees that are beyond. But we can, we can label that a little better, so it's clear.
Yeah, I'll just make sure. I didn't look at the others, but, yeah, just make, just so everybody knows.
It says, it says seven tulip tree below that?
Yeah, that should, I don't, I'll have to, I'll have to talk with our landscape architect.
Yeah, the labels don't really match up with the.
I think it's referring to the seven along the road, so like that symbol that's like green and yellow and big, you can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think it's.
There's more than.
They don't have like the lines connecting them, but.
Yeah.
I think because it's the same symbol, you're supposed to kind of visually connect it.
Yeah, so like these.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah.
So like when you see that symbol, I think it's always a tulip tree.
Correct.
On the plan.
I think the point is, this is a pretty critical area in terms of the landscaping as it affects the most impacted of budding properties. So it's a pretty critical spot, right? So whatever it is, screening's the priority, right?
Right, yep, absolutely. Yep, and she, she knew that when she did the plan, so she made an effort to, you know, make them dense in that area.
What's the situation with HVAC in the Phase Two building, in the main building on Portsmouth? Is it on the roof? Do you have?
Yes, yeah, it's on the roof. But it's kind of dropped down, like within the roof, because there's a flat roof that's within the outer part, so it'll, it won't be visible.
From either side?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other, other, in Phase One, they're all internal?
Yeah.
I would guess, okay. In the, in this? In the first, in the first one of these that you gave us, there were plantings. And I know this is, I don't put a lot of stake in this, but there aren't any in this. I'm gonna go by the, what's on the landscape plan.
Yeah, so we, we just had the architect take it off because they, they didn't coordinate, so we wanted to make sure that we were not, you know, showing different information on two plans. So it's better to just have everything that's landscaping on the one landscaping plan.
Okay.
Sounds like that was one of your responses to the town engineer, right?
Yes. Yeah, somebody, somebody made the comment, I think, that the architectural plan didn't match. Yeah, the landscaping plan.
Somewhere I read something about bike racks. Do you have bike racks proposed anywhere?
Um, yes, I think we did add those, actually. Or maybe that was a more, that might have been a more recent comment.
I think that was.
Yeah, so we, we still need to add those.
Okay, but you will put some.
Yes, yep.
Some in.
Yeah, we can put that as part of the Phase Two.
As the, the trail that borders, the recreation trail that you have, that hasn't been, that hasn't been cut as, as yet, right?
No.
Is that in a really steep, I mean, is that a realistic place? It just seems like there's a pretty significant grade there. Not that I'm going up and going, it's good to go up and down hills, but I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, so the trail kind of runs, we showed it, sort of running along the contours versus up and down the hills.
Versus up and down, okay.
So kind of lengthening the pathway that it goes across.
Okay.
So that it isn't too steep. And we also proposed the stairs there, which kind of get you down a few steps to that elevation.
Yeah.
Which will help make that up. So then it kind of runs, you can see, along the contours, loops back around, so that you're not going up too steep of a slope.
How, how wide?
So that's a loop that you put in for trail?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yep, I see it. Yep.
Do you have an idea, and I don't know if you've discussed this with the Conservation Commission, like how wide it would be, or what this, you just leave it as it's natural?
Yeah, we're not, we're not really gonna go in there and like cut a bunch of trees. It's kind of just gonna follow, you know, we're gonna make it follow a path that's more natural. So maybe, you know, maybe like three feet wide. It's not gonna be too wide.
Okay. Are there any, I know there are a lot of invasives, particularly, well, I don't, I didn't look closely at the, at the upper wetland area, but I know in Wetland A, I think there were a lot of invasive. Is there any plan to deal with those? There's a lot in there that would be nice to remove, but I don't know. Again, is that anything that the Conservation Commission questioned you on, or?
No, we didn't talk about invasives. There are a lot of invasives out there. We would have to, if we were going to remove invasives, it would require like permitting with the Wetland Bureau and all of that stuff, because they're in the wetland. So we haven't proposed any removal of those for this project.
The recreation requirements, this is, I, I know you've designated on the plans recreation areas and have given the square footage of each of those. Is that adequate, or do you need to address that to have recreation fees, or? I don't know how, how that discussion has gone either. I mean, a lot of projects, there just isn't room for a recreation area on site.
Mm-hmm.
And even though you've, you've laid out some areas, they're pretty small, and I don't know that you would call them recreation areas, just because they're, you know, very narrow and, and you might be able, might be able to fit a picnic table on one of them, but is that, is that enough for what the plans require, what the project requires?
Our understanding is that it meets the regulation, because it's just a square, like a square footage.
Yeah.
So we've shown the recreation area as the green space that we're proposing around the units, because obviously, you know, owners could go outside, cook on the grill, throw a frisbee behind their unit, that type of thing, in the grass space. And then we're proposing the trail as well. So our understanding is that it meets the regulation, but we haven't, we haven't really talked about the recreation space quite yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the 600 square feet over by the loading area on Phase Two might be a little bit of a stretch, calling that a recreation area, but.
Yeah.
I'd probably agree with the other ones.
Yeah, and I think we had a little bit, look at the size, but I think we had a little bit more square footage than we needed, so we could probably take that area out.
Yeah, it looks like you've got a little buffer.
Well, perhaps Kristen might have some input on the trail at least, without going a full-blown trail kind of thing, but where it's part of the recreation for the, for the development, I think some input would be appropriate there, yeah.
I mean, your main, your main area for people to congregate is really gonna be between the two, between Building Eleven and Building Nine, I guess, the, right up the middle, next to the sidewalk.
Yeah, and then also next to Buildings Six and Seven, in the grass space that we proposed there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would you mind walking us through the drainage plan, like?
Yeah, absolutely.
For both Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah, so I'll go to the grading plan. So on the grading plan, you can see this kind of hatched area with the crosshatch. So those are all porous pavement areas. So essentially, like I said, this, the site sits in a bowl currently. So all the runoff will come down the road in both directions, you know, from both roads, toward the porous pavement. Same thing with all the surrounding areas to be infiltrated. So that's pretty much the gist of the stormwater for the rear part of the site. There's not a whole lot going on. It's pretty straightforward. And then for the front part of the site, it's a little trickier, because we don't have a lot of space for it, and we have, we're not bringing in a ton of fill just because it's right next to Portsmouth Ave. So we're proposing underground detention, which are concrete chambers that'll store and detain the runoff to slow, slow it down. And then we're also proposing some filtration chambers, which are called, they're from a manufacturer called Contec, and it's called a jellyfish, and that treats the stormwater. We have two of them, which will treat the stormwater from the pavement as well as the roof. And then, once it's treated, it'll be outletted into the wetland. And then we have a small filtration system up front as well, which treats some of the runoff from the front part of the driveway as well as the sidewalk.
So on Phase One, like, what about the water falling on the roof? Where's that going?
Yeah, so behind, sorry, I forgot to mention that. Behind the buildings, we also have filtration drip edges, so the rear parts of the roof will go into those where they will be treated as well. And that's kind of a similar mechanism, but not, obviously not pavement, but it's, it's a, it's a filter course, and then a stone reservoir beneath that'll treat and infiltrate the runoff. And then the front halves of the roof will flow into the porous pavement.
And then, so the porous pavement is infiltrating, or is there an under-drain system that's discharging somewhere?
Most of it is infiltrating. There are some sections, like I was mentioning earlier, that because we didn't have the separation-to-water table, we'll be lining those sections with an impermeable liner. And then those sections will be under-drained to the sections that can infiltrate, so that they still get treated. But then they can go to a section that's, that's, that can infiltrate it.
So then, any, I think, I'm still caught up on the snow storage in Erin's question. So any snow that's stored in an area that's not draining toward your permeable pavement is therefore not going to be treated?
Right, so we tried to put the snow storage in areas where it would, once it melted, go towards the pavement, so that it can be treated.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think Erin's point is extremely valid, that the snow storage is gonna happen over there, which is the slope that goes, melts into the wetland. So I think addressing that would be really important.
We, yeah, we could look at adding some kind of a, like a filter and designate that as the snow storage, and then maybe filter the, you know, the snow melt from it. It's always tricky, too, in the winter, because if the ground's frozen, you know, it may not necessarily get into it.
Yeah, that's your solid piece of the road there, the regular pavement to that. Oh, that would be Building Eleven, huh? Yeah.
Yeah.
So something probably needs to be done there.
So while everyone's looking at your plans, can I just follow up on a few things? Just, can we go back to your March 19th, 2025 letter with your responses?
Yes.
Most of mine that I've had, questions I had, are already asked and answered. I was curious on number, page two, number 58, when they considered the bollards, is there a reason why you didn't opt to add those two, just for safety for the building?
Yeah, so we, we ended up widening the road in those sections by, I think it was six feet.
And you filled out?
Yeah, so we widened it. And the other thing that we did, too, is that we set back the first floor, which will be the garage, back an additional two feet.
Canaliver over the front, yeah.
Yeah, so the second floor will be canalivered over it. So we felt that, you know, adding that extra space would provide the safety that's necessary.
With the, adding the bollards, would that pose another problem?
Certainly for plowing, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. A few more. Checked off and circled and everything. So six, on page four, 65, and then page five, 66, you were waiting for DPW on those.
Yes, 65.
So 65 water conduits and 66 sewer conduits. Are you still waiting on DPW?
Um, well, which, which one? Um, well, which, which one specifically under 65?
Well, it says 65C, we're waiting.
65C, okay. I just wasn't sure if it was A, A, B, C, D.
Nope, it's the only one under that that says you're waiting for response.
Yeah, so that one was about the, the inline valve?
Mm-hmm.
Or the hydro valve. Yeah, so I did, I spoke with Paul Blasich, um, the town engineer, yesterday, and he had some ideas about how he wants to see the water line layout. So he wanted to just meet to, to finalize the layout before we.
So you have a future meeting?
Yes, so that is how he wants to handle that. Yes.
Okay, so next page 66, uh, A2, for sewer comments. Same thing?
Yep, same thing there.
Okay.
He just said he would prefer just to meet, so we can hash it out.
No, no, I just, Gwen's got all of my other questions, so that's great.
Yeah, the one thing he did answer was there was a question about a valve at the end of Haven Lane. He, they wanted to know if it was active, and he did say, yes, it is. That was the one question that he did give me an answer on.
Okay. I think that was it on that document. My other questions are later.
I had just a curiosity question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, are you doing anything, it's just purely curiosity. Are you doing anything for electric car charging stations in the buildout?
Yep, so we had, that came up at TRC, the first TRC meeting. Um, there's a requirement in the site plan regulations now to provide, um, not to provide the actual stations, but to provide essentially the wiring for it, so that if they decide to put it in later.
Infrastructure for it.
The infrastructure's in place, so we do have a note on the plan, um, that that will be done as part of the, uh, Phase Two, with the front building.
So it'll be set up to serve the neighborhood, is that the idea?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, okay.
The condo association.
It won't be on the back, Phase One.
It's on Phase Two.
Yeah, my question's.
It won't be on Phase One because they have garages.
So they could put.
They put them in themselves.
They could put them in themselves.
They can put in, they can plug inside the garage.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Ah, yes, okay.
It is. Are you doing those a lot, at all these days? No, just curious, seeing where that's at.
10%?
Yeah. Still early.
10% is kind of a lot, though.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we only require 2% of the park.
And that's one in 10 cars, that needs to charge.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you don't have a garage, you really need that, you really, and you have an electric car.
Yeah.
Really dependent on that.
So my, my other question at this point was, um, can you just describe what you envision the access between the two phases, the pedestrian piece to be, and how that's gonna function at, say this is approved, say it's built out, and now it's part of the existing neighborhood? Bringing, you know, how, how do you anticipate managing pedestrians walking through your project to get to Portsmouth Ave?
You mean walking through the, um, the Fisher Otter parts?
Walking from Haven Lane to Portsmouth Ave.
Um, well, so the si, the sidewalk goes out to Haven Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, people could, the, the neighbor, the neighborhood could walk through the buildings and then come out to Portsmouth Ave, I mean, I don't.
So you're not gonna manage that at all, is what I'm saying.
I mean, it's, we didn't anticipate it's gonna be like a publicly available sidewalk, um, just because it does go behind units.
Mm-hmm.
So to have it open to the public would be, but I mean, there's not really a great way to control it.
Right.
If somebody did it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's probably gonna happen.
The condo association would have to kind of police it and post, you know, post signs.
So I'm wondering if there's a way to mitigate that by having access from Haven Lane behind your Phase One to get to the sidewalk, the connection between the two. Is there, you know, is there a way to make that realistic, to come off of that end, to keep them out of the main body of your new neighborhood? But bring them on the, you know, kind of through the middle of the actual property, to the right here, to the right?
Hmm.
Yep, down along that line again. Can you come down that, can they come down that line and connect to the crosswalk or?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we had it that way at one point, we had, but it's, it's kind of a weird thing, because when you have it in front of the driveways, and it, the driveways are so wide.
Yeah.
It's almost like the sidewalk kind of disappears.
Yeah, right.
As part of it. Um, so we thought that this was a better layout without having that, so that this, it was clear where the sidewalk is and where the parking is. And it doesn't become this kind of intermixed, here's the sidewalk, here's the parking, with either striping or, you know, some kind of sur, different surface
Hmm.
that would require additional, um, you know, separation of the porous pavement and all of that. So that was why we made that change, but I think we did have it on one of the plans that's with the sidewalk that way.
It's just one of those things, I think, that is, from a practical perspective, five years down the road, someone who lives, who wants to walk around a little bit, is probably gonna use it.
Is that a bad thing?
Yeah.
I mean, these are nice neighbors.
It's not a bad thing at all, I'm trying to encourage it, and make it feasible.
It sounds like you're discouraging it, that's why I, I'm.
Well, what I'm trying to communicate is, can we manage that so that it's encouraged?
Okay, that's different. Sounds like you were saying, how can we manage it so that people?
Which side of the road coming off of, uh, Haven Lane? Our driver, I should say, is the sidewalk. Isn't there a sidewalk on the, on that first, oh.
So it comes in right on this end.
Okay, what about the other entrance, anything or not?
No.
No.
So we had, what we had was this coming in, and then this sidewalk would kind of connect these neighbor, you know, these units, so that they could walk over to it.
Yep, yep. But people will come walking down that from Haven Lane, too.
That's what I'm thinking would make sense. If you can kind of connect the neighborhoods, I think it just.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me, to get, to encourage, because we, one of the things we are trying to do as a town is to make it more walkable in general.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of our master plan, is to, you know, encourage that. So if someone could walk from Bonnie or further into the neighborhood and get to Portsmouth Ave a little more directly, it might encourage them to walk versus jumping in a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is a win for the community, if you know what I mean. So just, I don't know if there's something you can do with it to.
Yeah, we can take a look at it, and we'll, we'll take a look.
And when I say manage it, I'm not trying to prevent it, I'm trying to just, you know, make it not interfere with the utility of the new neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it works for everybody.
Do you think because it's going kind of behind people's houses, it feels like it's a little too private? Is that what you're getting at, and like people might feel discouraged from using it?
I, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, what I see is that people are probably gonna walk through the middle, but if you can make it more of a pleasing situation for everybody, I'd rather walk through the woods to go to Portsmouth Ave, if it were me. So if there were a way for me to get off of Haven Lane, go behind the project through more of a wooded path to that existing new connection, that would be my preference. It would probably, you know, be a pretty common preference, Jen, I think.
I would probably take the shortest route.
Just go through the.
I would just cut through the pavement.
People are gonna walk, that's what I was thinking. Most people, if they're gonna get through, they're just gonna walk right down the pavement.
So when I go to the gym, they tell you, don't park at the closest spot here, Jim.
Oh, I park at this.
Well, there you go. Well, there you go. I just saved you 10 minutes on your workout, park a little further away. When you go to the Y, park over by the old Talbot and walk over, you're already warmed up, ready to go.
Pack them up, park in the lower lot.
Right, exactly. It's just sort of something to think about. You know what I mean? If you can do that, I think it really.
It's under connectivity, so.
Yeah, exactly. It's something we are trying to do as a town.
Always have, yep.
And there seems like an opportunity here. That was it for me at this point.
Yeah. Will you proceed, or?
All right. I do want, I do actually want to say thank you for this part. I know that was.
Very helpful.
It's not quite Riverwoods, but it's still really good. I had to say that. But it's very helpful, actually, it is very helpful.
Eight years down the road, see what other trees are doing?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, that's good.
I'm, just a quick landscaping.
Yes.
It's hard to look at these and be able to see what's happening in back of these buildings. I'm still, I'm, I'm still a little concerned about Bonnie, um, Eleven Bonnie, and whether they're being adequately shielded.
They're not.
I know the fence is, it doesn't go to their property. You've got a few trees planted, but if it's all, if it's mostly low, um, low shrubs and some pines mixed in, that does, and I don't know if that's what's there, but that's kind of what my memory of it is. I just, I, I would just like to see that beefed up a little bit, just to offer them some more protection.
Yeah, it sounded like the board earlier when we discussed that, wanted to see maybe a few more trees in this section right here.
Yeah.
Because we have kind of a gap in that area.
And how about down, because Bon, Eleven Bonnie is further down, right? It's past the.
They have, they have an empty lot.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so their house is further, kind of if you're facing, standing on Bonnie Drive, facing the house, it's on the right-hand side of the lot, and then they have woods on this side.
So they're gonna see the back of Building One.
Yes, yeah.
That's gonna be, and so I guess that's, I know you've got three trees planted there.
You could have a break in the fence and still fence that line. So you don't have to fence it continually, but you could have a break.
Well, so we have, the fence comes along this property line, makes a turn and ends sort of right before the wetland buffer starts.
Yeah.
Um, so if we were to put a fence way over here, we'd be, you know, going into the woods, disturbing the woods to put a fence. So there's, there's quite a large tree buffer between the building, um, and that house versus the homes that are on this side, um, which is why we, we did the fence in that area.
Have they, have you had communication with that abutter?
I'm right here.
I understand that.
No.
All right, did you get a copy of this letter?
Uh, I don't believe so. Is it new?
It's dated March 23rd.
No, I have not seen that.
Oh, Erin's gonna walk it over to you.
I think it's pretty valid, pretty typical.
Yep.
It is one of your closer abutters, obviously.
Yeah, um.
You don't have to, you don't have to make a commitment to something right now, but just something. Honestly, I feel remiss, I should have brought that up earlier in the meeting.
So I think it's, it's showing pictures of trees that are going to be removed, but many of those trees are not going to be removed.
Yeah.
Um, you can see that kind of curvy line on the plan, and I wish I had a highlighter, but I don't, um, is a tree line.
Okay.
So here is the tree line, here is the tree line, so all of that are trees to remain.
Okay.
And, you know, even looking from this angle toward Units Two and One, all of that is trees to remain. So we're, you know, we're not disturbing the wetland buffer in that area. Whereas if we continued the fence and had to cut trees to put the fence in.
Right.
We would be cutting more trees.
Yeah, I don't.
So a fence doesn't have to be a fence, it can be a living screen. To me, might be the real alternative there.
Yes. Yeah, I think certainly on the landscaping plan, where we have some kind of gaps.
Right.
Um, we can certainly add some plants in there and, and see what we can do on this, those few trees along that.
Probably the, from my perspective, and probably much of the board, probably the preferred option anyway, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and a fence just becomes a maintenance thing, and it's not natural. A living barrier, I think, is generally preferred.
Mm-hmm, and if it's out in the woods, it becomes even worse to maintain.
Exactly.
I think, like, looking at this, I don't know how accurate this plan is, but like if you're asking them to plant a row of shrubs in an existing woodland, you really can't do that. I mean, you try to dig in that ground, it's gonna be roots, like just roots, roots, roots. You're gonna disturb the roots to plant an evergreen that's gonna probably die.
So I appreciate that, because I know this is your field.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't think that's, I think if anything, I would maybe offer to, the best screening would be closer to Eleven Bonnie, like on their property.
Yeah.
Like a fence, or shrubs, or maybe.
Couple of trees.
Stipend for them to install some screening. Um, I, I just think that's more practical, because.
Yeah.
The closer you get to the, to Building One, it's not gonna be effective. Like, a 10-foot-high evergreen's not gonna screen a 35-foot-high building.
So they'd have to have a conversation with.
That's kind of.
It, that makes sense to me, too, but we.
I think that's the most practical approach personally.
We can encourage you to have a conversation with.
Yep.
Them.
Yep. What's, what's the limit?
I think she has spoken at hearings, right?
My mother has.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has been to the meetings, yes.
But they haven't spoken.
Directly, they haven't spoken, but they, they, but they have, uh, I think you have as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, but if you two can have a conversation as well.
Does that make sense to you? I know you had to go to a mic, I'm sorry.
Ideas from like, from Sharon, from Sharon Ab, you know, you have.
Microphone, gotta use the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, you gotta go to a microphone, I'm sorry.
I have a phone.
Yeah.
No, it's my fault.
Well, Chairman should be.
Just go to a mic up here.
Thank you.
You have to introduce yourself.
Hi, Craig Bedrow from Eleven Bonnie Drive. So one of the pictures that my mother sent on the, on her email, I mean, her letter. Can you, um, can you please put it on, the one that shows our house, please? So, this woods right here, would you say that's about twice as much as that woods there? And even with, so I have, in the picture, in there, you can see our neighbors, and, and now you're saying, there's gonna be half as much woodland there? And these are gonna, to your point, these are gonna be 35 feet tall.
Yeah.
Not 20, 15 feet tall, or whatever. Um, the other thing is, what's the guarantee that this is gonna stay that deep? You know, they're not gonna clear more than that? Is there any promise that they're gonna keep that much?
I think they're in the wetlands buffer.
What's the limit of clearing there? Can you show?
Yeah.
Already, we're at a point where they can see, we're, we're gonna be able to see right through. And again, when I was driving around the neighborhood and sharing circle, this is the, the new property. They have the trees in front of the fence. So if you're, the properties on the opposite side, the existing houses, this is looking into the existing houses' backyards, they have the fence, and then behind it, on the new property, is the trees.
Yeah.
And I think something like that would be, and I agree, it may not work right there, but you could do something like that across, where if the trees are going, something like this along, besides, that way I, we know it won't be cleared more, and the fence could go along that, or, you know, or the fence go right along to there. But, but yeah, that's, that's a big concern for us to have, again, this, I think, I think they did it well on, Chairman, that being said, it's still, they're gonna see over the fence. They're still gonna be able to see over the fence, but at least we feel like there's a wall there, and then with the trees there, that'll, over time, build up some.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's definitely a concern, area of concern that I, I empathize with. To me, I mean, if it were me, I would redo that area. I would take down what's there, and I would put something more appropriate going into the future. And I, my personal preference would be natural. You know, re-landscape that area, but I'm also a control freak, so I'd wanna do it on my property, not yours, if it's me.
That's not much, that's not a lot of room here.
That's what I'm saying, and then you control it, and you let it die, and now I'm looking at your house. Because if I'm in one of those condos, I don't wanna look at you either. I mean, that's the way it is, right? Screening goes both ways.
Yep, no, absolutely. To that point, and I just wanna talk about the, the sidewalk thing. So I'm thinking to myself, okay, when I'm walking to Thirsty, Thirsty Woods, I'm gonna come through here.
Yep.
Because I'm not gonna wanna walk in people's backyards. And again, even though I'm the existing neighbor and then the new neighbor's.
Sure.
I would respect them enough not to walk down their backyards.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, we were just trying to figure out if there's a way to do it. I was trying to figure out. it. I was trying to figure out a way to do it more naturally, going to the end of Haven, and maybe that's a stretch, people aren't, people are lazy, maybe, but not everybody is. Not everybody. Maybe 10% aren't. I'll use my electric car, and I'll go a long way.
I'm going to tell you, this is a clear shot that people would do, if they see, because they're going to be able to see through, they're going to come right through there, boom.
Yep. Can't imagine teenagers going the long route, but, you know.
You know, a fence or very thick shrubbing, prevent that.
Yeah, right. So your preference really is just screening at the end of the day?
I, I think a combination of natural and a fence, because I, the natural's going to take some time to, to fill in.
Yeah. I mean, there's some big ones. One of my neighbors did these frickin' Norwegian spruces, and they blew my mind, what those things.
Those get big.
You know, you just died, because they're huge, right?
Yeah, I would never plant one unless I had a lot of space.
It didn't take as long as I thought, I mean, but, and they're beautiful.
I think the problem in part is...
Definitely, she is an expert, so she's the...
Okay.
You've got a lot of trees there, and you, and I agree with Jen, you're not, you're not going to plant many trees in the forest, because the forest is already there.
Well, again, if you go this way, again, what is this area right here? Is this the existing trees?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what the, that's what it's showing.
Okay, so are you really going to keep the existing trees within a couple feet of the, the back porch? I, I don't think, you know, I'm thinking not. You're going to, you're going to clear some of this out. That's the reality. You're not going to have it go within a couple feet of the back porch. So this is unrealistic, this buffer.
So the line, the, sorry, the line itself on those plans, even though the curvy part of it looks like it's, you know, sticking out right close to the unit, the actual limit of clearing is kind of the interior edge of that line. That's what we calculated for our wetland buffer impact. So the wetland buffer, you can see it, it's this dash line that comes out.
Yeah.
So anything that's, you know, beyond that on this side would be additional wetland buffer impact.
Yep.
Which we're trying to avoid. So we wouldn't be clearing additional beyond.
Well, you're, you're talking, this is 20 feet, you know, this is 25 feet, and we're not talking these, we're talking maybe one tree over here, and the rest bushes, and a, as you can see in the pictures my mother sent.
Well, to me, if you impact a wetlands buffer, but then you re-vegetate it, it's a net zero, probably, in terms of down the road, and it could really improve, I think, for both sides, that area. I mean, to me, if I'm living in one of these units, in building, I think that's one, and it's maybe got beautiful landscaping out behind it, and I'm not looking into the existing neighborhood, you know, we're not looking at each other.
Yep.
While we're eating dinner, that's a win for everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, again, this is why...
But it is, I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish from an engineer's perspective, absolutely.
So that line of trees...
It's a tight area, though. That is, that's probably one of the biggest areas of concern for me.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're happy to, we have his letter, so we're happy to reach out and just work directly with him on how, how best to accomplish that.
Okay.
How wet is that?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
How wet?
Like, along your border, along your property line.
This part gets pretty wet. Our basement used to flood, I think we talked about, but then they put in the drainage. Our basement doesn't flood anymore.
Well, that's good.
So my big fear is, if this gets backed up, is our basement going to flood again? That, that is, like, my biggest fear in this, even more than the privacy thing, because now that destroys our home. But, yeah, this, this is, gets wet here.
It is right now.
Yeah.
Thirsty Moose has cones and whatnot that's flooded into their parking lot right now.
You got to go to the mic, my dear.
One of the reasons I asked is because there are certain, I mean, if we tried to plant things in there, you're going to have to plant accordingly, and there are lots of things that are just going to die if they're in, if their feet are wet, their roots are drowning, so...
Yeah, and my thought is, okay, we don't want to go onto the wetlands with a fence, but we're already going, intruding on the wetlands here, so I, I have no...
You're actually not.
You're in the buffer.
You're in the buffer.
Oh, the buffer.
Well, there is a difference.
They're both important.
Yes. Yeah, in my mind, they're both important, but...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Did the young lady in the audience want to make a comment at the mic? I'm taking testimony.
I'm Susan Taylor, I live at 30 Haven Lane. If you take a ride to the back of the Thirsty Moose Park, you'll see it's all wet. Behind where the auto parts store is on the corner, there are cones out with yellow tape, because the water's come into the parking lot already, and we haven't even had any major rain. You can stand in there, you can walk through there, you can see it all out there at this point. So a runoff is a concern, for sure, considering it's already happened, and we haven't had any spring rain yet. So...
Weekend.
Correct. One other question, just one question, and I think I mentioned already once. Why can't it be one-way going around? Why does it have to be cars coming both ways, in and out, on both directions? Is there a reason for that? I live at the end of Bonnie Drive. All the cars come at us now. I'm 30. 32 is at the end of the top there. He's going to get it all, right at him.
Got my headlights?
Headlights. We got used to it when we first, it took us a long time to get used to it, because everybody that comes down Bonnie, now we're going to get double time, because we're the way in. So we have one bush in the front of the yard for ourselves, which is fine. For them, it's going to be very hard to get adjusted to. So the headlights is a huge thing, also the lights that you might have all around. I don't want it to be broad daylight all, all night long. For whatever kind of lighting you put on these townhouses, it's not fun when you don't like all the lighting. It's hard. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we opened the public comment officially. I was asking a specific question. Somebody submitted a letter, and that's what I was responding to. She commented from the audience during that testimony, so I wanted clarification. She took a little liberty there, but that's okay. We're not opening, thank you.
Yeah.
I think we may again, but I'm not sure.
Did you want me to speak to any of that?
Just the one-way, it is a good question.
About the drainage?
The one-way.
Oh, the one-way. We could consider making it one-way. We'd have to do signage, I guess, and I don't know which way the board would, would want to see the one-way coming in and out.
David, you wait, can you wait on that?
Which way would you want the one-way to go?
Uh, what, is there a question in there?
One-way?
Is it possible?
I mean, to, to me, it's not great for the utility of the project. I understand the concern with headlights.
Well, one-way will cause all the traffic.
To go the other way.
To go one way or the other, so it's two ways.
That's true. You could bring them in Haven and bring them all right out.
The other end of Haven Lane will not have as much traffic. Because obviously, here on the first unit, you're going to use that.
You could go either way, one-way.
Yes, you could.
But...
Yeah, I mean, you're driving, you know, like, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how effective it'll be, I mean, you know, depending on which way. There's a couple houses that are close. I mean, you, you get in one-way, you have to drive all around through to get to your place.
Right.
Where, like, if you lived in building one, and Haven Lane was one-way from the end around the corner.
And again, it would be...
You would have to go past it, down around, all the way through the development, and back up to that. Same with building seven, the other way.
The Mills is one-way. The Mills is one-way.
Yeah, the Mills is one-way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know...
It's a little bit different situation when it's apartment buildings with an actual parking lot, with angled parking.
Right.
That's easier to enforce. With something like this, we can't, we can't narrow up the driveway at all, because we can't reduce the amount of space that we're providing for cars to get in and out of the garage. So the roadway itself would still be wide enough for a two-way road. It would just be a matter of whether or not the condo assoc- condo association actually enforces it, versus the actual aisle with itself getting narrower to accommodate the one-way.
Yeah.
And is, I mean, what's, what's the benefit? Is it, is it, you know, is it safety?
I'm curious. It was brought up, so I'm curious, pros and cons.
Would it help with plowing? I don't know.
They probably would, yeah, sometimes plows don't, don't hit here. They go wherever they want.
You know, there keeps getting brought up about these, we have the plans, we have these proposals, but I keep hearing, but if, if they'll do it, if they do it.
The plows.
Well, yeah, the, I mean, I've never seen a plow, I've never seen a plow driver with the site plan next to it.
No, I understand that. I'm not...
Yeah, so that...
That's not what I said, Jamie. But what I'm saying is, we're, we're, we're looking at this, and we're trying to take everybody into consideration, but I, I've heard three times tonight that, but if they do it, I'm just a little frustrated.
Well, I think, like, Erin's point was a good one, because it's, it's more practical in, in that approach of thinking, like, where is the most natural spot for the snow to go, and how do we get it to a spot when it does melt, where the, it'll still be treated?
You could do it by signage, right? That, this is where the snow goes.
Mm-hmm. You could do that, but they still might not follow the signage.
That hasn't been, yeah, that's not, I've seen that, too. That's not very effective.
So you have to kind of more think about where is the most natural storage area for the snow?
It's going to, people are going to put it where they want to put it, just like on every home on Haven Lane and Bonnie, they, they put it where they want to put it. So that's, it's just going to happen. I mean, we, we just say snow storage, we don't dictate where it goes. The only thing in our regs says, just show it on the plan. So people show it on the plans, and it's a big discussion, but I, I don't know how you, you know, you regulate that or enforce it.
So we're having a big discussion.
But it's important to have it there, because...
No, understood, but...
Because if we have wetlands, and like, right here, we don't want it going over into the wetlands, so it's important that they've designated a spot between the two phases, so that there is a place.
Oh, I get that.
We need to know that there's a place.
No, I get that. It just, I'm not sure, I'm not convinced, being, doing this a long time, that the plow driver is going to know that and put that there.
Absolutely.
That, just, they're going to put it where, you know, where it's convenient for them to put it, in the quickest way to get clear the snow and go on to the next place.
So they're up to the condo association to enforce it.
Mr. Chair, it's nine o'clock, and I know we have another application after this. I'm wondering if there's a exit strategy.
Yes, one question, and it's for, if I could, on, there was some concern about the length, if this is approved, and the phases, and the length, because of the current lease being expiring after a certain amount of time, and then they have a five-year extension. So if I could just ask about that. I, I'm, we've lost track of time, so could someone give me a date on when that lease expires, and when the leasing would have to notify, when the leasing would have to notify, whether or not they're going to extend that lease?
I think the solution will be a condition, that they, they will return to us when it's ready to be built.
Okay, well, that's an option, but I...
Five years. We'd have to give them a, you know, they only get three years anyway, so we're going to have to give them permission for another.
They only get one.
One, one time, yeah, for another, what, two years?
So that's a question, though.
But then you can, you can extend that. The planning board could say, okay, I'll give you four years or five years.
They're not vested, though?
No.
Okay.
You're vested for active and substantial development and building, which is defined in our regulations.
Yeah.
And that is defined as all, you, all gravel, yeah, I mean, all pavement down to gravel base, a minimum, all curving in, all drainage, so the front site is not going to have any of it.
Right.
It, it's not going to. So phase one, you could say, would, will be vested.
Right.
But phase two won't.
Not at all, probably.
In my opinion.
Yeah, okay.
Because it doesn't meet our active and substantial. Once it meets active and substantial development and building, then it becomes as defined in our regs.
But I think Lang's point is a good one. We're probably, if we're going to deal with the second phase, it probably makes sense just to push it out there and not get too hung up on, other than the drainage issues particularly, right, and access to porcelain to have through it. But other than that, it's likely to change before it comes back anyway. So getting too far into that, unless this was all one project, it doesn't make too much sense anyway. So have them come back.
Well, I think they're asking for approval of the entire project.
Yeah. But a condition of that, because of the length of time, porcelain to have may have changed. I mean, you know, so there may be some changes that...
I mean, I guess if they didn't tell us they had the timing issue, we wouldn't know.
It's like any other project.
And they'd have to come back anyway, to get to continue, to continue the one-year out, right?
Mr. Chair, for me, Attorney John Bosson, behalf of the applicant, I think one of the concerns we have is, is vesting under the statute, so, under the ordinance, so that's the question, is when, when do we meet active and substantial completion, because there's one lot. So if this is looked at in two phases, phase one being the back portion, phase two being the front portion, but in that front portion, I'm sorry, in phase one, residential units get built, plus the walkway, that's part of, and the utility, is it the water line?
The water line, yes.
As one lot, that should be enough to meet active and substantial completion, in my opinion.
For phase one.
Yeah, right.
Read our definition.
Right, but at that point, though, is it that the, we're vested, that's the key? So we don't want to, we'll say this, say the month goes away. That's what we'd protect ourselves against.
Understood.
Yeah, my, I mean, it all has to be down, like, the pavement, the, the front, the sidewalks, they all have to be down to gravel base. They're not, they're not going to be. They're just not. So I would say you're vested on phase one, but to get vested on phase two, you've got to have active and substantial development and building on that side.
The other thing I would offer that, is that your ordinance, you know, does provide for phasing. And what it doesn't provide is a lot of definition to what phasing is. But I think as part of this project, it's within the jurisdiction of this board to define as a condition of approval what that is.
Yeah, I think, does this answer your question? If they approve, say they approve the plan, and you say, okay, this site plan, it's good, valid for five years, then you are vested both phase one, phase two, the entire site's vested for the five years.
Correct.
Then you have to come back for an extension. You know, so if you build out phase one, you build out phase one, and then you come back for an extension, I don't believe you're vested on phase two, but you are for five years. And then if they grant the extension, you continue that.
Correct. In the, in the current tenant, and I may not have this exactly, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, they exercised an option to extend, right? So that would give them another five years, beginning last May.
March.
March.
Okay, so they have four years more. See, I thought we, so when we first started this conversation, I don't know how many months ago it was, so I've lost track of this. So my understanding at the beginning of the conversation was, they had, I both thought it was four years left with the option of five more. So where are we right now?
Yep.
Thank you.
So they have four years left, and then there is an optional extension for another five years. But, you know, we don't, we don't know whether that, they're going to exercise that or not.
I'm just thinking of options, that's why I'm asking the question, what the board decides to do, but I would like an answer to it. So now I know it's four years in March, you said? Right? Okay.
We think it's...
Whose option is it? The tenant's option?
The tenant's option.
So it could be nine years.
Yeah, but that's to say we don't know. So we're seeking approval for the entire project, and, you know, we can't say for sure whether the tenant's going to remain or not.
I have to think of the whole big picture here, so, so four years, I'll do that. And then, do we have a, do you, can you tell me when you'll know if they are going to exercise the additional five years?
They could let us know 30 days before the end.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Right. But, but bear in mind, bear in mind, as, as we're talking about timing, they could, they could leave early.
Sorry, one thing, yeah, I'm just doing this for knowledge.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Keep in mind, they could also leave early.
I, I don't know what your lease says, so that it gives them the option to...
Right, a lease isn't a guarantee. I mean, if the company goes bankrupt, if there's a problem... I mean, if the company goes bankrupt, if there's a problem, they, all of a sudden, your wonderful piece of paper is worthless.
I understand, I'm, okay.
So, but I guess what we'd be looking for, so say they went to the end of this fourth year and they give us notification. It's not feasible at that point for us to do this approval and have it in time to knock down the building and go. We'd be looking for, hopefully, that five-year period. Hopefully, they're gone. If they're not, then we have to come back. Does that sound reasonable?
It's a long approval.
Yeah, it's an awful long approval.
Never done that, I don't remember doing a five-year.
New one for us, so that's why we're struggling with it.
Yeah, and that's why I was trying to compromise. Why I wanted those dates, thank you.
So the ordinance does, though, authorize the board to grant a project in phases. Now, this first phase would probably take a couple of years anyway. By the time you get the approvals, break, you know, get your permits, build out your project for two years into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so 2029 or 2034.
So Dave, when it takes years to build out a project, like it often does, our approval generally lasts for a year and you have to start your project within that year.
Yeah, but then when you get a building, then you get a building permit, that's good for a year and then you get another six-month extension on that, basically automatically, so that's another 18 months.
So if everything got approved, phase one, phase two, we haven't done a lot of dialogue on phase two, but if it all got approved and there's no gap in time in the build-out, it just keeps going, right?
Yeah.
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 So it's a moot issue. It's a regular approval for one year and they just keep going.
What do you mean they keep going?
Yeah.
They keep building, they don't finish the project.
Yeah.
I'm saying a what-if, what-if. What if they build, however many units do you have here? How many you got?
Total.
How many units?
Total.
Thirty-four in the back, thirty-six in the.
All right, so you got 33 units built, you're still slowly hammering on the 34th unit and now your tenant's moving out and you just, oh, got another hammer in this week. Isn't it just continual? Can't you just continue the project that way as his control? This is a what-if.
Uh, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, you know, you know you can.
You mean, you mean it's kind of like.
How could you not? You're gonna tell me if he doesn't complete this project within five years, he's not gonna be able to complete it?
No, he's gonna have to come back for an extension.
What? So he's under construction, he pulls his permit, he's building at that project.
Phase one.
It's.
I see it as two phases being vested, like phase one and phase two.
How? I don't get that part of your interpretation.
Because they're proposing a phasing plan, you're approving it in phases.
Yeah.
So they have five years to complete both phases, but they complete phase one and then I think they're vested with phase one, that's done, that's complete. But then is phase two vested? If it's not, at the end of five years, it hasn't started and they haven't done it, they have to come back to you for an extension. It's almost like, you know, a lot of people come back for six, seven, you know, I've seen it.
Sure.
Four, five, six, seven extensions, you know, and then finally you're like, okay, you usually approve them unless the regulations have changed dramatically to, you know, affect the, impact the development for the, you know, like better regulations, better stormwater regulations and so forth like we did in 2018.
So if they eliminated the request for phasing and called it a project.
That's exactly what we're just gonna propose, is we eliminate phase one, phase two, and it's just a project.
And you just keep it building? We're not gonna stop them from building out their project once they start.
If you oppose it not in phases, then I agree.
Well, that's your way around a five-year approval.
Does that apply?
Whatever the board wants. I think the board could do it both ways.
It's a discussion.
Yeah, it is a discussion.
It's a discussion.
I'm just saying it's a discussion.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering.
I don't know the answer if that's wise. I don't know if it is, honestly.
So just to add a little bit to that, on our original plan set, we never even had a phasing plan. The topic came up because it came up in discussion, you know, during the very first meeting. And I think it even came up at TRC, which is why we added the phasing plan, just to show what the construction would be, to show that the water line and the sidewalk would be constructed during phase one and that those weren't gonna be five to 10 years down the road because that was important as part of the MUN zoning. So that was the reason the phasing plan was added in the first place.
There's also provision in section 12.4 of the ordinance, and it's regarding the Board of Adjustment, but I think it's spot on and asks you to read 12.4. But a Board of Adjustment, we're not in front of the ZBA, but a Board of Adjustment approval is valid for a period of three years. ZBA may grant a one-year extension. This says, once substantial completion of the improvements, modifications, alterations or changes in the property or use contemplated by the applicant's petition have occurred in compliance with the approval, the rights of the owner shall vest. So that seems to say you got three years, you get a one-year approval, but once you've got substantial completion of improvements or continual, then you're vested. And I think that's all we want to do is have this project approved in any manner such that we can build it out in the way that we promised this board and the public, we're gonna build this project under the MUN, we want to have the right to be able to do that.
Just a point, that applies to the ZBA, it does not apply here.
I understand.
We have, okay, we have similar regulations that are a little bit different in 13.8. That's what we follow, in 13.8 of the site plan, right? That lays out the active and substantial development and.
It was a little bit different than 13, that's why I wanted to mention it. I knew it was ZBA.
So if it's in the site plan regulations, if the board felt that they still wanted to see the phasing plan, could they grant a waiver from that and then condition the approval upon some other definition of active and substantial completion?
No.
That's a good question. That's a very good question.
I mean, if it's a waiver, the planning board can waive any of these petitions. You have the authority to waive them all.
So, so we would have the authority to basically say you can be vested if you do X?
So you just, you waived from 13.8.4.
Okay.
So you don't need to active and substantial development and if you don't need it in the state law, then if you don't define it, you don't get to, you don't get to enforce it. So if you waived it, then it wouldn't be defined. That's my opinion, so. I think you can articulate what you want in the approval and that would, that would work. You wanted to give them five years, if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to just say, okay, you know, we're approving the entire plan if it gets built, you know.
We've just, we've never done this.
Yeah.
So we're working on it.
See, this is a new one, yeah.
Give them five years.
Probably the way to go, right? I mean, I can understand their concern about potential changing in regulations, that can happen, it does happen, so.
Right.
You know? And I think that the intent of the change in zoning that affected this parcel, I think, was to see more of what looks to me like phase two than phase one. So making it easier for phase two to happen, I believe, is following our master plan personally. So I think, you know, I don't think it's the intent of our master plan or the change in zoning that was passed recently for just phase one to happen and phase two to just stay what it is forever. That's, I think, completely the opposite of what we tried to accomplish.
Well, this accomplishes it with a, with phase two.
That's why I think we want to encourage phase two to be successful.
Oh, yes, yep.
It's one project. It's one parcel, it's one project.
Yeah, it's a timeframe, John, that's a challenge.
That's why I asked the question, it's the timeframe.
Speaking of time.
Yes. Thank you for the answer to that.
Ma'am, I mean, if you're thinking about like going on to the, you have a project here that's on the 15th.
What do you think we should do?
The 65 days, you, if you're gonna stay later, you need to, I would recommend, you need to stay on this project. And if you don't get to the second one, you don't get to the second. You know, not sure, at this time, the 65 days is coming on, on this one. So, you know, I think you move on to this one until you adjourn tonight, you know, or if you don't, you know, or sooner if you want to get to the next.
Should we just release the next applicant and tell them we're not gonna get to them at this point?
Probably so, yeah.
You usually don't, your rules say you don't take any new business after 10 and you adjourn by 10:30.
Yeah.
Well, it's quarter past nine, we're gonna still be on this at 10 o'clock.
So, do you want to make an announcement?
Yeah, I would say, looking at where we're at, that we stay with this project and probably the next item on the agenda, which is application of Stone Arch Development, and I'll run through that, it's Plating Board Case 25-1, be scheduled for the 10th. Because I noticed you dropped the phone once, Christian, that means you're getting a little tired.
Does that work for you?
Does that work for you?
Ms. Parker Lee, please.
Okay.
Quite frankly, all we were hoping for today was to.
Start.
Get the application completed, present it and see if you guys want to decide.
Okay. Dude, I don't think we can schedule.
We don't need to continue this because we haven't opened it yet, right?
Yes, you should. You should say continue, yeah, you know, you should say it's continued till, so you don't have to repost it.
We've got a motion coming out.
I make a motion to continue Planning Board Case Number 25-1 until April 10, 7:00 PM at the Exeter Town Office Building, the Noag Room.
Second.
Who did second it? Voice, vote, please, those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, eyes carried, thank you very much, Christian.
Before.
Always a pleasure.
Before they leave, can we schedule the sidewalk?
Ken, if you'd like, I think so.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Try to do that. Schedule the sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay.
Stand out there.
So, what's it look like around the 10?
The meeting's April 10.
I'm not, no, I.
Pardon me?
The meeting is April 10, sometimes you've done it that morning.
Excuse a little bit of a adjournment here, we just got, do a little housekeeping.
The next meeting's April 10, so we want to try to do it before that, is that what you're?
No, sometimes you've done it the morning of.
Yeah.
Right.
You usually do it on Thursdays.
Let's do that.
Glenn, Erin?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Usually do your sidewalks on Thursdays, right?
We, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, you're really talking the 3rd or the 10th.
10th is the hearing date.
Yeah.
Never terrible.
You have a hearing?
They're coming to the 10th.
And while we're on that date, just an FYI, Fair Point Park Committee has an extra meeting. Those should be out of here in plenty of time for us, but just for anybody showing
So the 10th?
The 10th at 8:00 AM.
That works for me.
Okay, all right.
Glenn, do you think that?
I'll have, I'll shift things around, yeah.
Christian said he'll invite us to coffee at Dunkin' Donuts if you get there at 7:30.
Count on that.
There should be a room on.
On site?
Yeah, so you know where the site is, right there, yep. All right.
That is at.
That's that.
And did someone say 8:00 AM? Was that discussed yet?
That's usually always when you.
Yeah, I just, doing my calendar here.
Okay.
Okay, we have a, thank you.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
See you then.
Thank you.
Dr. Yara Wiggely, schedule a program.
Yes, thank you. All right, have we any other discussion or questions? We need to, let me find Dave's memo here.
Are we comfortable with lighting? I actually had one question. On your light, lighting plan, oh gosh, if I can find it, there's a picture of one of the, one of the lights. Oh, gosh, wait a minute. It's not that one. It's on page, on L3, and I wouldn't have questioned this except I was coming back from Dover today and I noticed lights like this and they had bulbs that came down like four or five inches from the base, from the bottom of the shade itself. And I assume that that would not happen with this, but, so you have the, you have the, this is the light and the bulb.
Yeah, no, those don't, these will not have that.
Okay, I just want to make sure because those wouldn't work.
No.
Okay.
So lights.
It looks like you're out of the wetlands, out of the neighbors.
What do you see for being used for lights on the structures by the front doors, I guess is the question? That type there, okay. So it's all down, downlit, so to speak? And there's no streetlights in the neighborhood, I don't think, planned, or am I wrong?
There's a couple decorative ones, they're shown on L3, they're the ones that are in that top middle, so they're not too tall, they're just decorative, and we show.
Can you point out on the plan where that is, please?
Yeah, so it's, there's one.
Okay.
And then one down in here, it's hard to see them up there, actually. And then a third one by the mailhouse. And we do have the reason why there's so many numbers on this, it shows the lighting distribution to show that the lighting will not cross any property lines as well.
How about phase two?
Phase two, we have, again, some of the decorative light fixtures along the rear parking lot, just to light up the parking lot for security.
Yep.
We have some wall packs on the backside that aren't decorative, just because they're on the rear of the building, and then we have some of those decorative ones in the front.
Yeah, front of the buildings, okay. Are the other ones on the back, similar type of down?
Yeah, they're all downlit. You can see the ones in the back are this detail that's up in the right corner.
It's a really hard plan.
Is that the same L3 that we have? You can't, you can't see that.
I know, you can't see them on there.
Like this, you can see perfectly.
It's so weird.
So.
It is the same L3, I don't know why, it's so bizarre.
You can see them where they cross the building. I think it's just the screen resolution.
The L3 in your set, you can definitely see where all the lights are and their cone of dispersion and all that, so.
But yeah, it is, it's the same set, so I don't know.
That's strange. You can see the difference there?
Yeah.
Can't make that out of there.
Anything else? Are we ready to move ahead here? Have we got any particular waivers we're thinking of or maybe we're not ready for those yet? We do have two motions to waiver.
I don't know if you're going back to the public at all tonight, or-
I'm not planning to at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think, um, well, I mean, we have an attorney here who probably wants to talk to us about waivers, might want to hear some of that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if he's the one presenting, obviously.
Want to address the waivers?
Sure.
waiver criterias, address the waivers?
Yeah.
We have a request to move, uh, date of January thirteen.
Yes, yeah, so the first waiver, we kind of discussed a bit earlier.
Yep.
Um, which is this, the five-foot, um, grading within five feet of a property line, um, so we requested this waiver because we have grading, obviously, within five feet of the proper, property line, which is mainly to install buffering, um, between abutters and the project, as well as fencing, um, due to the proximity of the abutters.
Can you read your statement in your letter, please?
Oh, you want me to just read it word for word?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, great, so it's section nine point three, point, uh, six, four, grading within five feet of an exterior property line, we request a waiver from this section as the proposal is a mixed-use neighborhood development, the munt zoning has no setbacks, um, to property lines for buildings, and therefore it seems likely that buildings in close proximity, and therefore grading, are expected as part of munt developments. In addition, this particular site has wetlands and portions of the site are encumbered by buffers, so in order to keep the wetland buffer impacts as minimal as possible, we have kept the proposed roadways closer to the property lines wherever feasible. The section of the property where the main access will be off of Haven Lane is only forty feet wide, so it is not possible to construct a road without grading within five feet of the property line. Silt fence and construction fencing will be placed along the property lines during construction to prevent sediment from leaving the property, and all areas will be stabilized via pavement, side, sidewalk, or restored to vegetation following construction.
Anybody got a motion?
I, oh.
Dave?
I mean, I, I could just add, you know, the, the five foot, the main part where the roadway accesses the site is exempt from that provision.
Okay.
So-
Good to know.
Just, just, like, you know, you gotta access the site, so-
Right.
It's, it, it, right where it goes, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, you know, like, on this, because like, if it was a long frontage, you know, you could pick where it was, then you could meet it, but when you have forty feet and fifty feet, that's, we have to commit.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't apply, it exempts that sections, but it's still needed-
Yeah.
For other parts, just wanted to be clear.
Anybody care to make a motion? Don't speak all at once.
Discussion on this one?
Don't be shy.
The five foot, it's pretty much always necessary, it's just making sure we have some control over it, right, and we discuss it.
Yeah, gives them the-
Alright, so I'll make a motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Green and Company Plating Board Case number twenty-four dash eight, for a waiver from section nine point three, point six, point four of the site plan, review and subdivision regulations regarding grading within five feet of an exterior property line be approved.
Is there a second, please?
I second.
Okay, Dean seconded. Any discussion? Let's see now, roll call vote? Alright.
I'm gonna pass for a minute, I want to think about this. You know, I'm fine with this one.
Yes, okay.
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous vote, so that one is approved. Next thing is the curb radius intersection, so back to you, please.
Yeah, so, um, my explanation for this is a little confusing, so I'll read it first, and then I'll try to show you on the plan what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
Um, we request a waiver from this section as the paved roadway in Haven Lane is almost thirty feet wide, which is six feet wider than is typically required for a road per the town regulations, with a paved road taking up most of the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way for this property, and the existing right-of-way for this property being only forty feet wide, the maximum available radius without encroaching onto abutters is ten feet. However, all vehicle turning templates, including a fire truck, work with the proposed ten-foot radii, and two accesses to Haven Lane are now provided. Additionally, the wide paved road for Haven Lane provides additional turning space onto the proposed road. A twenty-five-foot radius between the proposed road and a theoretical twenty-four-foot wide paved road, if Haven Lane was the typical width, would result in a similar amount of paved turning area as the proposed ten-foot radius between the proposed road and Haven Lane. So, what I'm referring to there is that if Haven Lane was narrower, um, the twen, required twenty-four feet for a town road, we actually could make that radius work, it's because the pavement goes so close to the, the, um, right-of-way edge, we physically can't fit a wider radius than what we're proposing. But that being said, because the road is so wide, trucks are able to, you know, still make the turn into the road, because they still have the paved area that would have been there if the, if, um, we provided that radius and the road was narrower.
Unique to the situation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Any questions about that?
And we do also include the truck turning plans in the plan set that show the vehicles making those maneuvers, I think I showed them at one of the previous meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have one question, I can't remember, are there sidewalks, were the roads really wide there?
No.
No sidewalks?
Okay, thank you.
In the neighborhood, no.
So if in the future they put them in, that wouldn't affect your being able to get in and out?
They-
Or they could just cut them, make them shy?
You mean on Haven Lane?
Yeah.
They would probably have to reduce the road width to put the sidewalk in, because otherwise-
Of course, yes.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise they would be on to the abutters, but yes, they would, they would put it in, and then we would, we would have the radius at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, it's pretty straightforward on this one, it's just, uh, like you just said, it's a unique situation, it's an existing situation, and having them conform to the radius requirement in this case is unnecessary, because there is pavement to perform the same radius turn. So I can make a motion if that's what you are looking for.
I have, I have some feedback on that.
So, we're not taking testimony, right?
No.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Green and Company Plating Board Case number twenty-four dash eight, for a waiver from the standard specifications for construction relative to curb radius be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, we'll do roll call vote, and I'll start with Jen.
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote, thank you, that passes. So, we're looking at continual use permit. And what do we got to find on that one? We got the five things that have to be-
What, I'm, I didn't hear, what's he looking for?
What, we gotta re, re, review those five criteria?
Yeah, have her, have her do it, right, have her present on it? Have her present on it? Ask her to address it.
Do you have it, or do you want us to?
I'm, I wasn't expecting to go through these criteria tonight, so I'm hoping that I have the-
I have them pulled up, if it's helpful.
I believe I have them somewhere.
I think they provided them in writing, responses to-
The responses, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure, I remember seeing them.
This is an important step, of course.
Yeah, I think I have them.
Yes.
February fifth.
Okay.
Do you want us to go through these criteria as well?
Go ahead, please, with that.
Okay. So, section nine point one, point six, point B, conditional use criteria, um, the first criteria is that the proposed use is permitted in the underlying zoning district, so yes, a mixed-use neighborhood development is permitted in the C two zoning district. Criteria two, no alternative design which does not impact a wetland or wetland buffer, or which has less detrimental impact on the wetland or well and buffer is feasible, and our response was alternate, alternative designs have been considered, including the conceptual apartment-style building design that was presented in, in July to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. That plan proposed the entirety of the wetlands C and D to be filled for large buildings, the plan was revised to a townhouse layout to be more in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. The newly proposed townhouse layout proposes only one small wetland fill at the westernmost end of Wetland D, and one crossing of Wetland C, both of which have limited to no functions. As discussed at the Conservation Commission meeting, filling of these wetlands for this style of development would not be permitted by DES, it is also a benefit to the drainage on the property, as well as the wetland connectivity to maintain these wetlands. Since the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five version of the plan, the design has been revised as much as possible to make use of all of the available and accessible space outside of the buffer on the property for buildings and impervious surfaces. This has changed some of the impacts from permanent to temporary, reducing impervious sur, surface in the buffer, as well as substantially reducing the overall buffer impacts to be similar to what was proposed in the July conceptual design. No other alternative layout is feasible that would support this type of housing, which is most suitable for the, for the neighborhood. The remaining buffer impacts can be replicated with proposed vegetation in disturbed areas after the construction is complete. Additionally, as outlined on the revised plans, only seven point seven percent of the limited use buffer on the property is proposed to be impacted, leaving a substantial amount of unimpacted buffer remaining. Do I want to just go through each of them, or do you want to discuss the criteria one by one?
I think we're all set on the first one. Yeah, please continue.
Okay, the third one is, a wetland scientist has provided an, an impact evaluation that includes the functions and values of the wetland, an assessment of the potential project-related impacts, and concluded to the extent feasible that the proposed impact is not detrimental to the value and function of the wetland or greater hydraulic, hydraulic system. And our response was, a functions and values report has been provided by the wetland scientist consultant as attached. Overall, all of the wetland functions have been degraded by proximity to development and fragmentation. Generally, impacts to the wetland buffers will not have a measurable impact to the wetland functions. Wetlands, Wetland A's principal function is flood flow alteration, also known as stormwater storage. With no direct wetland impact, the principal function is not reduced by the development. Wetland B has more functions, but still has a principal function of flood flow alteration. With no direct impact, the principal function is not compromised. While other functions are present, the degradation caused by human proximity, water quality degradation, erosion of the channel, and fragmentation results in that the buffer impacts on the functions can be mitigated by buffer treatment. Wetlands C and D are man-made and have very limited to no wetland functions. Criteria four, that the design, construction, and maintenance of the proposed use will, to the extent feasible, minimize detrimental impact on the wetland or wetland buffer. The proposed design and construction minimizes detrimental impacts to the wetlands as much as possible, the design has been altered in order to maintain connectivity of the wetlands and drainage, the buffers will be replicated via proposed vegetation, the wetlands will be protected during construction via silt barriers. Criteria five, the proposed use will not create a hazard to individual or public health, safety, and welfare due to the loss of wetland, contamination of groundwater, or other reasons. Um, and our response was, the only direct wetland impact proposed as part of the project are ma, to man-made wetlands with very limited, to no wetland functions. The impacts are minor, and one will be a crossing so that drainage connectivity is maintained. Contamination of groundwater will not occur because stormwater will be treated in compliance with the Town of Exeter Site Plan Regulations, as well as NHDES Alteration of Terrain Regulations for pollutant removal prior to discharging to the wetlands or groundwater. Peak flows in the proposed condition will be controlled to match existing for all required storm events so as not to increase flooding to neighborhood properties, neighboring properties. No other hazard to individual, public, health, safety, or welfare will, will occur as a result of the proposed wetland buffer impacts. The sixth one is, the applicant may propose in, an increase in wetland buffers elsewhere on the site that surrounds a wetland of equal or greater size, and of equal or greater functional value than the impacted wetland. And our response was, the existing vegetated area on the east side of the site behind the commercial buildings on Portsmouth Ave is to be permanently conserved for green space and to remain undeveloped as part of the project. This is a buffer to a commercial area that in many cases has stormwater directly sheet-flowing to the wetland, and is important to be conserved for filtration of stormwater. Additionally, as outlined on the revised plans, only seven point seven percent of the limited use buffer on the property is proposed to be impacted, leaving a substantial amount of unimpacted buffer remaining. Buffer plaques are proposed along the proposed tree line, and there will be language in the condominium declarations to ensure that further disturbance of the buffer does not occur by homeowners. And the seventh one, in cases where the proposed use is temporary, or where construction activity disturbs areas adjacent to the immediate use, the applicant has included a restoration proposal, revegetating any disturbed area within the buffer with the goal to restore the site as nearly as possible to its original grade and condition following construction. Our response was, this, the included plan set proposes to restore all disturbed areas of the buffer that are not proposed to be permanently impacted with vegetation, C sheet L one of the plan set. And lastly, the eighth criteria is that all required permits will be obtained from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Water Quality, and Pollution Control Division, um, the New Hampshire Wetlands Board, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, um, under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act, and our response is, all required state permits will be obtained, um, for this project, including NHDES Alteration of Terrain, NHDES Wastewater Connection, and EPA Construction General Permit.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions about any of those? We've, uh, looked them before, anyway, but-
Yeah.
Appreciate you reviewing that with us.
Sure.
So I'm open to a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
Do we need further discussion on this motion?
I'm personally, I think, criteria four, five, and potentially six, or no, just four and five, sorry, um, the snow storage issue, I feel like, is not addressed enough in these plans, and I don't believe that, I, I think that it's, I think that the design is not allowing for adequate snow storage in areas that snow will practically go, and the place that it will practically go is in a buffer, so that area that's marked as a temporary impact, I think is going to become more of a permanent impact because of pollution entering that part of the site. And I'm just concerned that we haven't seen how that's going to be addressed, so I don't think that I feel comfortable approving a CUP, um, based on those two criteria, personally.
Okay.
Yeah, so, sorry, we just wanted to talk-
That's fine.
-for a second. Um, so, the grading plan, and I didn't realize this previously, but there, so the area that's in this, uh, green space, part of it is graded toward the porous pavement, so all the runoff that melts from the snow storage that's in this area will run down to the porous pavement to be treated. Um, and then the second thing is that with porous pavement, you can't just use regular rolled, road salt, you can use other de-icers, but it's not, that you can't use salt or sand on it, um, because it doesn't, the maintenance of it, um, it breaks down. So, that's another thing to add to that, that I didn't mention previously. And then we also are going to end up having to remove a lot of snow from the site, like we mentioned before, um, and that's noted on the site plan.
So are you saying that the road treatment where it's normal pavement will also not be salt?
Yeah, because they're not going to end up using, like, multiple different types of treatment.
Okay, yeah.
They'll just, you know, they'll come to the site, they'll bring one.
Any other questions about that?
I, I think snow's going to end up there. I mean, at the end of the day, and I'm not trying to be difficult about it, but I just think it's what's going to happen. Where's the elevation one?
Yeah, so C three-
C three?
Is the grading plan?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I think I know how to read a grading plan, and I'm, I'm seeing elevation thirty-three point three, thirty-three point two, thirty-three point four, and thirty-four at the curb line, and- 33.4, and 34 at the curb line, and top of wall 32, 32, 33, 33, which is the lower.
Yeah, sorry. So what I meant was that the pavement itself is pitched this way, so... And we do have some area that's right along the pavement. As it gets back toward the wall, it does slope down, but we also could grade this area all toward the pavement pretty easily, and that would have no impact to our buffer impacts or anything like that. So we could revise those top of wall elevations to pitch that all toward the porous so that any snow that does end up there would melt onto the porous for treatment.
So you would basically create a berm-
Yeah.
-in front of the retaining wall?
Yeah.
But then what about down where it's, like, closer to the stairs? Like, south of the male kiosk?
Yeah, right in here.
I mean, that's pretty steep. I don't think you're going to get a berm in there.
No, the only way to do it would be, the top of wall would have to come up.
Yeah, so, I mean-
So it'd be a taller wall.
-that's a pretty complicated change. I don't think that I would be... Feel comfortable with that being a condition of approval without actually seeing that and seeing the change in the drainage plan and everything, so that doesn't really satisfy my concern.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, we could stipulate as a condition of approval agreement not to use any salt or chloride products on the property.
Sorry, I can't hear, sir.
So we wouldn't use any salt, any salt or chloride products?
Right, yeah. So Jen, your concern is that that be shown on the plans, that those changes, to handle that?
So, previously, yeah, so, I mean, it's...
In order to-
It's essentially the whole drainage plan, as it was explained, is that everything's going toward these pervious areas. So it's getting-
Yes.
-the water, the stormwater, the salt, whatever, whatever's in it is supposed to be treated, right? The pervious pavement is what's treating that. When it snows, that snow, whether it has salt in it or not, still is stormwater. It needs to be treated. So if you pick it up off the pervious pavement and you dump it into a slope that drains to a wetland, it's not being treated. It's going to melt eventually, and it's going to go into the wetland. So, and there's, you know, if you're not using salt, you're using sand, and God knows what's in that, and there's motor oil and all kinds of stuff. So that's why we have stormwater regs. And I just, I feel like the reason the conditional use permit exists is to say that we feel comfortable that this project is doing its best, and I feel like this project could do better than what we're seeing here.
Yeah.
The opportunity's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think with looking at the grades of the retaining wall, it wouldn't have to come up substantially in order to make the grade work. Like, we're not looking at a huge slope that it would have to be changed by. We're only looking at, you know, maybe six inches or so that we would have to raise the wall to get that to pitch toward the pavement in certain areas. And I think that with us still needing to get, you know, final sign-off from Underwood, that could be something that could be reviewed on their end, if it was a condition by the board that said, "We want to make sure that all snow storage areas have the snow melt reaching a place where it's being treated, the stormwater's being treated."
Yeah.
That could be something that Underwood, I would think, could review and confirm for the board.
I would think that would work. Dave, that would be satisfactory, wouldn't it?
That's up to the board.
Okay.
I think we've done it before, both ways.
Yes.
Both ways.
Yes.
We've made them redo it and come back, and then we've also moved forward, so-
Yeah.
We've gone both ways on this kind of an issue. I think I have, do have a question about snow removal requirements. So if you have a project designed, and your only feasible way to manage snow is to have it trucked off, is that not allowed? Do we allow that? If you develop a property and you have no place to put snow, you have to truck it off?
I guess so, yeah. I mean, it... Our regs don't require that, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, doesn't prohibit it that? Yeah.
Right.
But we have to, they have to show snow storage.
You have to show snow storage on the plans, but like, the ioka, they didn't, you know, they didn't show-
But they don't have any, they don't have, like, a parking lot, they need a plaque.
You know, four feet, you know, on the side, you know, they didn't show any, but, you know, so, I mean, it's smaller, granted, but, you know, there are cases where they don't show it, you know, and, but, you know, I don't know. That's a good question.
I agree with Jen. I don't like it in the islands. I think it's not practical. It's defeating the purpose of the vegetation in the first place.
Yeah, you're going to struggle to keep it alive.
I can't have them follow it that way either.
Right. So to me-
I agree with her there.
I think that's the area.
Yeah.
That's the spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think we could, like I said, pretty simply change the grades to make that work, show that as our snow storage area.
Yeah.
And if it gets beyond, you know, what can fit there, then that's at the point that they would truck it off.
Right.
You know, if we get a bad winter.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I can't imagine that not being feasible, to raise that up and change that grade a little bit. It just seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plenty of space to do it.
Yeah, and it'll get treated.
And getting to the treatment-
Equally important.
Designed treatment is just resloping, reversing the grade-
And get-
-more adequately.
And have Underwood engineers-
And our, yeah, our town engineer is more qualified to quantify that than I am, as to whether or not it's appropriate, you know?
So that would become a condition.
It certainly could be.
Yeah.
But I know Jen expressed that she wasn't comfortable with that, so-
No, don't like it.
Don't like it, but-
Yeah.
That...
I know.
I'm only one of six.
Yeah.
The, just for the sake of saying it again for the board, I mean, we're talking about six inches to a foot of raising a wall height to get that graded flowing right back to the porous pavement. So it's, this isn't a significant change. It's a big area, which is the reason why it's a good spot for snow storage, but a little, an extra course or two on top of a retaining wall is not a significant issue.
Yeah, I think, I think he makes a good point that it's not a significant issue in terms of the design work. It looks to me very feasible. It's a significant issue in terms of the plan, but I do think we can make, I feel comfortable making it a condition, but I'm one person on this. Do you want to speak on that at all?
I'm cool with that.
Well...
No, you don't have to.
I, I, I'm, I am concerned about it. But I'm continuing to think about this and other, other aspects of the CUP.
Well, if our engineer and also the other professional group does it, is that a double check? Would that be more comfortable?
I mean, they didn't care. They didn't...
Yeah, I agree with Erin. It's not a major change, but it's a very important change. It's a technical change to be made, and we can get it approved or verified by a well-known organization that we work with on all of our plans. And that, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, you know?
The only alternative is for us to try to make a requirement for the redesign, and I actually feel less comfortable doing that.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, like, say, raise the wall x amount, get the grade up to x amount. I don't want to do that, so I think-
It needs to be, it needs an engineer's touch-
Right.
-so to speak.
Exactly.
To properly show the plan, to handle it.
And it's not uncommon to make, you know, minor technical changes like that after planning board approval anyway, especially since we're still waiting for our state permits. So, you know, small things could come up that may change the drainage design slightly or things like that, and that's not uncommon, that, you know, we submit it to Dave. He said, "Yeah, this doesn't differ substantially from what the planning board saw and approved."
It's what we call a minor change, and Dave usually approves those.
Yeah, so this type of change, to me, is in line with those types of changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you have anything else on it, Jen?
On the conditional use?
Yes.
I mean, not really. I, I think I still feel that, I think there's, I think there's probably, there's more parking than is needed, which results in a lot of asphalt, which results in a lot of stormwater and more impacts than I would think are probably needed. But, I mean, I know the applicant has, has worked really hard to shrink things down and tighten up the site over literally months of this process, so, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think that's, that's really the one thing that I can put my foot, my finger on, that, to me, seems like a sort of red flag for the wetlands.
I think I agree, Jen. And I'm grateful for the changes that you've made, changing building heights, changing locations of buildings in respect to, with respect to wetland buffers, but, I mean, you've got probably a third of an acre of permanent buffer impact. And when I, when it says, "No alternative design which does not impact a wetland or wetland buffer, which has detrimental impact on the wetlands or wetland buffer is feasible," I mean, I, I can't help but say, you know, going into this, you knew where the wetlands were, you knew where the buffers were, and I just feel that, you commented several times that you did your best to pull back from buffers, but I still think it's too much. I still think it's too much of a, of a buffer impact. And I know that the wetlands that, that are, that we're talking about, if we're looking at wetland A, it isn't a high-value wetland, but it, if, in our regs, we have, we have wetlands such as this, and we designate setbacks accordingly, and I just, I just think it's too much for the site.
What were the, Conservation Commission had a couple-
They did.
-suggestions or-
Yeah, they did.
In their letter, I do not, do you have those, Dave?
I've got it right here.
I do.
He's got it.
Could you refer those for us?
Yeah, sure.
Please?
The culvert between this project and the thirsty moose is upgraded as discussed. I think you said, what, 18-inch, you said?
Yes.
Okay. And then second, prior to the issue, it's a certificate of occupancy of the development, a deed restriction is executed, permanently protecting the east side of the development as presented on the January 30th plan, from further development, with the exception of a passive recreation pedestrian trail. And do you want to put on, up OV1 and show them that area?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, so the area that we're referencing is all of this space. Because there is a good chunk of upland and area outside the buffer in that area that we won't be touching, so that'll essentially be, this area will basically be extended buffer that won't be disturbed as part of the project or ever, because we're going to put it in a deed restriction as part of that condition.
But it doesn't include where the footpath is, the other side of the, or the wetlands that are there, is that correct?
No, it doesn't cross the wetlands. The footpath doesn't cross the wetlands.
Yeah, okay.
Just the right of it.
But we also have, we also do have wetland buffer plaques that are put up on the property, so those will prevent future clearing of trees beyond that. So it's effectively deed restricted as well.
And there's wetlands, so it's not developable.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that area up there, the top right corner, is definitely, you know, would be developable from, you know, one of those lots would grab that extra land and be able to develop, and there, you know, this, this would eliminate that possibility.
And like I mentioned, too, a lot of these commercial lots, they're, they have no stormwater management. They're just sheet flow is just running off-
They are what they are.
Yeah, so having that added wooded buffer really does help with the stormwater filtration of those sites, until eventually someday they're redeveloped and stormwater management gets added. But until then, you know, that will, that will assist in making sure that some of the runoff at least gets treated before it reaches this, which, you know, in our review with the Conservation Commission and from the wetland scientists, the higher value wetland is, is this vicinity.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's important also to note that when we did meet with the Conservation Commission, we had our wetland scientists attend. We spoke in depth with them about, you know, the functions and values of the wetland and really went through kind of an extensive process with them, going back and forth. I think we went to two or three meetings with them, and in order, in order to make these changes, to come to the solution that we have presented here today. And they, they felt comfortable with the proposal as outlined after hearing that testimony from GOV Environmental and then providing the two conditions that Dave just outlined.
Mm-hmm. I guess what they do is make a motion and put it to the test.
Okay.
And I would suggest we put some conditions with it as we discussed.
So what I heard is a condition, and I think Ms. Lydman noted it pretty well, actually, about the wall lifting up and the elevation.
Yeah, I think the way that I said it was that you could, you could condition it such that Underwood engineers reviews and ensures that all snow storage is properly treated via the stormwater, the stormwater proposal.
I wrote it, if you need it.
Let's hear it.
The open area on the easterly side of the access road between buildings six and seven shall be graded so the land slopes from the retaining wall toward the pavement so stormwater flows away from the wetlands and onto the pavement to be treated. I think that solves it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, I think it makes it more realistic.
Do you want to add that it needs to be, and is reviewed by an engineer?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I can add, you know-
As determined.
Subject to, review and approval by the town engineer.
Do you want to discuss this?
Town engineer or the design.
I mean, there might be other ways of treating that snow storage besides lifting the retaining wall, so, I mean, do we want to specifically say that's the approach you must take, or do we want to say, like, you need to figure out how to manage it in a satisfactory way?
I do like that, because the other option is, like, you know, create some sort of stormwater feature in that area. I think this is much better because it's just, you know, you don't have to maintain it, you don't, you know, it just slopes toward it, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's a big, it's, I don't know, looking at the grading plan, it's not six inches in some areas, it's considerably more than that, so it could become cumbersome.
I think that the engineers should figure that out.
That, that's why I'm saying, do we want to limit them to, you have to raise the height of the wall, or do we want to just say, you have to figure out something? Yeah.
Or an alternative, more appropriate design.
Yeah, just basically, you're managing the stormwater.
Yeah.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, but I don't know how you're going to do without sloping the grade to it.
I don't either, but it gives them less specificity that allows them more flexibility.
Yeah, no, I think to Jen's point, like, the other alternative would be to put something more against the wall.
Right.
And have, have it go that way, so, but until, you know, until we look at it.
Probably not what'll happen, but it is an option.
Or terracing the wall, or, you know, there's, there's lots of ways of, there's a lot of space there to
So.
Do it that might be a little less.
Well, you worded it just at the end right, "or an alternative design."
Yeah.
Or alternative design, or similar design that achieves the same.
Yeah, achieve.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, I feel like the way you said it the first time was like, perfect. We could only rewind the tape.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't need UEI though, necessarily. Because that would be a job for our town. I would suggest our town engineer do it.
True, that makes sense.
Yeah, agreed.
Or a similar design that achieves the same result. Basically, what the result is, is that, you know, any snow that gets stored in that area, snowmelt gets treated.
Yeah.
Before, you know, and ideally flows away. Well, it would have to flow away from the wetlands to get treated, unless it infiltrated into the ground. Yeah, unless they did some sort of infiltration trench, but I don't see it, but.
Right, yeah. Okay, would you read it again, David, please?
Two pencils.
So, "The open area on the easterly side of the access road between buildings six and seven is graded so the land slopes from the retaining wall toward the pavement so stormwater flows away from the wetlands and onto the pavement to be treated, or a similar design that achieves the same result. This shall, shall be subject to the ru, review and approval of the town engineer or their designee."
Sounds good to me. That's the only condition I'm thinking about in this motion, but you folks can feel free to add something.
The two that, the com-com recommended?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was going to say that, what you were going to say. So why don't you read the conditions again for me, if you don't mind? The com-com one, and you just said the first one.
Yep, and then, second would be, "The culvert between this project and the thirsty moose is upgraded as discussed."
Right.
And then, third, "Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the development, a deed restriction is executed permanently protecting the east side of the development as presented on the January 30th plan from further development with the exception of a passive recreation pedestrian trail."
Okay, so after reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move at the request of Green and Company, Planted Board Case Number 24-8 for a conditional use permit, be approved with the following conditions that were read by town planner David Sharple's.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, any further discussion or any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, so start with Nancy.
I'm going to say nay.
Nay, okay.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Two nays? Any abstentions? No. Let's see, two nays and, two, three, four.
Four, two.
Four, two. I declare it approved.
All right.
I have a multi-site plan motion. And we got any other conditions we've discussed that need to be included?
The thing I don't feel 100% on is the phase two.
The phase two.
Because right now, we're still on one approval.
Yes.
And we've had discussion tonight and previously about the phasing or not phasing and how to handle the timing and all that, so we have to kind of get that resolved, that should be resolved before we just get to that motion, in my opinion, so.
So we could make it a one project. We had that discussion.
Right.
Or a phase project.
Right.
But can you explain what the difference is, like, how that practically would? How is that different?
I think I can try.
Okay.
All right, I'll give it a try. So I think if, this is ju, just, pretend you never heard about phase one and phase two.
Okay.
It's a project like we see every day. 90% of them are probably not phased, if not higher, right? So it's just, it's just a project, and we approve it. We are aware that there is a timeframe limitation on the, the execution of the plan on the front building and that section of the development. So we know that it's going to take them a period of time to make, to be, likely take them time to get that done, because they're encumbered by a lease.
An existing lease.
Yep. So, we have to make a decision if we're going to extend our normal process and make it a five-year approval or a three-year approval? Or, we, so we can do that, I should say. That's one of our options. We can make it a five-year approval, or we could go forward and just say, "We're approving it," if we're approving it, right?
Yep.
And give them, "Go ahead," and then they have this, but they're making us aware that they're very unlikely to complete this project in a, in a normal timeframe because of the lease. So it's, it's likely to be a break in construction. My guess is, and I'm guessing, if this gets approved, they're probably going to start this warm season, and they're probably going to finish within the residential townhouse section within three years. I think, given market conditions and everything else, that would sell as quick as they build it. We know the housing needs, right, and the demand. So I think, you know, and, and this is a known entity in terms of construction and development, they're well-heeled and well-processed in terms of getting things done. They're not figuring it out. They, they have a plan, I'm sure, and they just apply it to this project. So the build-out for the back section is going to be about as quick as anybody could do it. But the front is not. So there will be, I think, unless they intentionally delayed things, a gap in time. So, we're trying to figure out how to deal with that.
So I guess, so back to my original question, though, like, if we approve it just as a project, not as a phased project?
Right.
Practically, how does that make it easier for them to build than if we approve it as a phased project?
The phase part, there's definitely been some legal debate about the phasing, investing, and everything else this evening that we've been aware and privy to between their council and our town planner. So, as I see it, there, the applicant's concern is that they could get this project approved, they could build out the front, and then, and I could be wrong, but then zoning changes, and they start to lose development opportunity in the front property. So that's when they're talking about vesting. What the vesting thing is, is now you've vested your rights, your rights don't go away. There's no timeframe on you anymore. You're vested. You've done enough work to the project that they can't lose what we already approved as a board.
Got it, okay.
Okay, that's what the vesting thing is. So, or, we can just give them enough time to deal with it in our approval, so vesting doesn't become a legal debate. And I think, you know, we want to be upfront with any applicant, and we don't want them to lose something that we think they want to have happen, and that's why I spoke earlier about, in my opinion, the front part of this project, quote-unquote, "Phase Two," really, I think, is what got things rezoned along Portsmouth Ave. I don't think it was desire for what ultimately happened in, with the townhouses. I don't think, I can probably figure how many people would have voted against that if this was put in front of them when they went and they voted for town rezoning. That's just being blunt. I tend to be blunt.
Yeah.
The, the front building on Portsmouth Ave, I think, is what people envisioned when they approved the rezoning. So I think, as a board, we're, we're following the desire of a lot of citizens to try to at least encourage that front part to happen, right?
Definitely, yeah.
So that's kind of our charge, as I see it. So the phasing part works, but you get into this vesting question.
I think one, one option could be that the board waive the definition of active and substantial construction, in this case, to be completion of the residential units in the back on Phase One, and the installation of utilities and the walking path. So then, we all agree that now we're vested, once we complete those, that part of the project, we know we're not going to lose our zoning when we go to complete.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where we're going. If we, if we, if we have the right, as Dave described, to make that change to our zoning as a board, or not zoning.
Yeah.
Required.
Gain zoning.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Requirement.
Regulate, site plan review regulations. You can, you can waive any of them.
Then that, that's probably the, my opinion, the best way for us to go, because then we're defining what our intent with this approval is. And we're not leaving an applicant at risk, because they've been very upfront with us about this situation.
Well, it's, it's not our job to delay things either. I mean, if, if, if we come up with a solution that's going to re, slow down Phase Two.
Right.
That doesn't make sense for anybody.
Exactly.
No. They, they're invested in it, and, yeah.
Then I think if you're looking at meeting housing needs, the Phase Two is
Yeah.
Pretty helpful.
It is. That type of housing is desperately needed.
Exactly, yeah.
So I have a question. Is it typical for a project to be ongoing that many years?
Well, how long is it going to take to build Riverwoods? Not five years.
Well, that's a separate, but they, they just got.
That's a huge project.
Of course it is, but they just.
It's very typical, is the answer to that.
But they don't have to come back for any approval.
No, it's, I think, Nancy, it's very typical. I think the market's extremely.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's an extremely liquid market right now.
Because I agree with you on one part, and that is that when I think the month passed, it was with the, in mind, of course, of that, not necessarily the back part. But that said, I, I just, I'm uncomfortable with this many years.
The answer to that question, I think, is, in this market, things are very fast, very liquid, because now that we're out of COVID and you can get construction materials, things are being built again, right? And, and it's sold, basically, or occupied, whatever it is, a sale or a rental, as quick as it's available.
Yes, we don't have any inventory.
Yeah, there's no vacancy. So right now, the timeframe wouldn't, if they didn't have to, if they weren't encumbered by the lease, I think they'd be completely in and out of there within three years, in this market.
Right.
In a down market, which I've been in real estate for over 20, I don't want to admit how old I am, a long time. So, I've seen projects like that take a long time. I was involved in a project in New Fields, it took 15 years.
Okay, so the answer to my question is, it's indefinite that someone can keep going as long as.
That's the vesting question, yes.
Well, as long as there's an active building.
A building.
Yeah.
They can keep going. And, and we, for example, I mean, I don't want to name them, but you probably figure out, there's a couple of developments that have been going on for five years, I mean, right now, and are still going on. One hasn't even really started the foundation yet.
But they got the fire hardwood in.
Yeah, they've graded the land. I mean, it's been approved for five years.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
Yeah, there, that, that happens, I mean.
And, and we don't have a lot of phasing, but the one that comes to my mind is Captain's Way.
That was a long time.
That was a long time.
Long time, it got built out, too. That went through a massive recession, and
Yes, yeah.
I don't even know how many builders have been in there.
Okay, so, any extenuating circumstances in the future are, are not even relevant at this point. It's typical, right, to be ongoing? Because they've already said.
Yeah.
So during your TRC, somehow phasing came up. Do you remember what the conversation?
Yeah, because we wanted to be assured, we wanted an understanding of what is exactly being built when you built the residential in the rear. And basically, it was like, we wanted to make sure pedestrian access was to Portsmouth Ave, and those sort of things were, were, were met, but we didn't know, like, so, you know, it was like, what are you doing? And then they decided to break it up into phases to identify what they're going to do first and what they're going to do second.
Okay.
We didn't necessarily ask for phasing, we just wanted to know, like, you know, that pedestrian connection from the rear lot, you know, the rear part of the lot to Portsmouth Ave. We wanted to make sure that was being done right away.
So really, the phasing.
That wasn't going to wait 10 years or five years.
The term phasing really just came out of a conversation.
Correct.
Okay, so I just need to stop thinking of phasing, because they said they wanted to not look at it as phasing.
But if it is phased, then they might have to come back and ask for an extension, which is no big problem. I mean, they don't have to show up, send a letter in, which would be the easiest way to handle it, I think, at this point.
Is it? That's the part I don't understand, because like, I don't understand that part. I don't understand the phasing part, so.
Okay.
If alternatively, we have it as a phase, then, I don't, I guess I just don't really get that process part. I just think, my, my feeling is you
Prove the project.
Approve it. And then say X, Y, and Z, you're going to waive this requirement, so you're vested once the back is done. And you have, and then it's, it is what it is. You're approving what's in front of you, and we're giving them the time to get it done, in a practical way.
Yep.
Because we know they're encumbered by a lease.
Yep.
So they can meet the housing needs in the back, at least for the town.
Yep.
And the front, as soon as is practical.
You wouldn't want to do, like, 10 years then? Because what you're doing is basically vesting them in perpetuity.
So if you meet the definition of vesting, isn't that doing that already?
Yeah, but they won't.
I understand.
They won't until they build Phase Two. As long as they're active, but if you gave it 10 years, then you could, you know, at least in year 10, if they haven't started or gotten a building permit by then, then you can always, you know, if you, if you felt something would be different, or needed to be different.
I mean, they could, they could also just vested by doing the site work at that point on the front, couldn't they? By the current definition?
Yeah, they would have to do quite a bit. I mean, they would have to rip up the pavement.
Unless you waive, per our suggestion, you know.
Yeah, but I was just saying, if you waived it, then that would be, you know, you would be vested, you know, 50 years from now, you know, like, I, I was just saying, I'm not saying anything against that, I'm just saying that's what that means, so, you could go 10 years, you know, whatever.
I mean, to me, I'd probably go 15 on that, just knowing business cycles. And, I mean, our purpose isn't to approve this and have it not be set up for success. But also indefinite is a little
Yeah, that's right.
You know, losing control completely as well. And I don't think we would necessarily want to do that, so. Does 15 years seem reasonable?
It does. All right.
There's a lot to discuss still on this part of the.
While, while ago, it's 15 years. Even, even after the dam's gone. Same water's running down the stream.
I think it'll be as soon as they can do it, in reality.
Wow.
But remember, there's an option that could be 10 years.
That's true.
Nine years. So if you're going to do it, I don't, I think 10 is still potentially a failure.
A little tight.
That's why I think 15 is the way to go, if you're going to do a time, you know?
Yeah, that makes sense. I hate to say that, but that's a whole new experience.
So what if there are new engineering principles? What if, what if there are things that take place on Portsmouth Avenue, new design ideas? That giving them 15 years exempts them from following suit? Does that? I mean, I think, I think, I think one of the reasons we have people come back is that we can kind of double-check our regulations and just kind of get things up to speed with what's happening.
kind of get things up to speed with what's happening in that area.
Good point. Maybe we can modify that to.
If getting an extension is a big deal, I would agree, but it's not that hard to get an extension. It's about the fourth time when we say, hey, next time we got to see somebody to come in, make an honest presentation to us and demonstrate the need, that they need another extension. That's the only time it really becomes tough, we got to spend money to get an engineer to come in, convince us.
The other thing to note on that topic is that if, if we were to do the fifteen-year timeframe, we would also have to extend our state permits. Um, and for the same reason, they don't allow you to just indefinitely request extensions. Because state rules do change.
Good.
Um, from a stormwater perspective, so there wouldn't, you know, if we're twenty years out, they're probably going to not grant an extension.
Right.
Aren't they five years?
Yeah, the five-year extensions. Yeah, so in five years, we'll have to request an extension from AOT as well.
Fine. Okay, we beat the, that bush hard enough now. The leaves are falling off and it's springtime, come on.
Can I add one thing?
Certainly.
The one big thing is that this was designed under the MUND and we're trying to get it built with the MUND and this planning board all is in agreement, and if you're all here and you're going to, you know, extend it every year for ten years. That's one thing, but it may be a different board, the MUND may change. This was what was proposed, this is what the zoning was, and all of a sudden, this may go into limbo because of the zoning change. I think Aaron knows what we do, I, many of you may or may not know Green and Company, but we don't sit on our hands. We're telling the neighborhood that it's probably two years, it's probably faster for the, the back portion. And it probably would, would have been two years for the entire thing if we were allowed to move forward without the lease upfront. So we're, our intent is to move as rapidly as we can. If by any means or method we no longer have a tenant there, that we'll be starting promptly. So I just wanted to throw that out, but have, being able to, say, ten years from now, they leave, and we're in the middle of an economic recession, which changes the whole market dramatically for financing and construction. The, the fifteen-year timeframe would be wonderful. Eleven or twelve would be great. But one year, just isn't, I, I don't think we're talking about one year anymore, but one year, and one year, and one year, and one year. Doesn't really, doesn't really effectively work.
Yeah.
I'd rather see you waive the thirteen point eight. But if you want to put a limitation on it of a certain timeframe, I thought fifteen was a, was a good idea.
So, so I think Gwen's point of, Dave, is there a way to mitigate that, where, where, uh, we can incorporate potential changes in our requirements without, you know, navigating that? I know vesting basically means it is what it is, and you got it for X number of years. And fifteen does seem like a long time. And then we could be doing things, so I'm just thinking out loud here, obviously, so. I think probably from the applicant's perspective, the number of units is important. And if it has to be redesigned because all of a sudden we're making Portsmouth Ave look like Nantucket Village or something, you know? I mean.
Okay.
I don't know what, how you, how you navigate that issue.
Yeah, I think that's a little complicated.
I know.
You know, I, I would just stick with the years that you're comfortable with.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they get that to build it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they do, and that certainly sounds like their intent and.
Right.
You know.
Okay.
My, my concern wasn't so much as it wasn't looking at this and thinking that that, that the MUND would go away and that building would no longer be allowed based on whatever future plans we might have for the area. I'm, I was thinking more smaller things that could be beneficial to the plan, to the area. I mean, I'm not looking, I, I mean, what Aaron said earlier about this, this is what the MUND was designed for, this is what we hope to see, um, I'm fully supportive of that. It's just covering those little changes that, that will make Portsmouth Ave more appealing. And it may, it may be, would probably be something very small, but I just want to not have you outside of that realm of being able to change or upgrade or whatever it is. I don't know if that's making sense, it's so late now, I'm not.
I respect that, but I think you have to base the application on the current zoning and the current plan. We don't know what the future's going to bring. And to do otherwise would be highly speculative. You know, you got a plan in front of you, um, and we want to protect, we want to make sure that we build what we promised to this board. And that's the only reason why we're, we're fighting hard for the best thing, is we know that we can do that, we can deliver what we promise.
So a fifteen years is six years beyond the length of the potential lease with the extension? So just to give that, if that matters to anyone.
I do think we could live with ten.
Twelve. Twelve.
If that seems reasonable.
Four years beyond.
Three years, right? Nine plus three is twelve?
More for economic market.
Yeah. Right.
I, I, I know, thank you. Oh my gosh. Do we have to make a motion or something to keep going for this ten thirty? Didn't you say earlier?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
The light stay on?
Kind of rose farm.
I was not part of it, but I still want to.
It was a big night, plus it.
Be doing it.
It wasn't a.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
We didn't make a lot of sense after about eleven.
I'm getting there now, so.
That was like my first shutdown early.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Okay. All right, so can you, did you get anything worded, Smith, over there? Mr. Sharple's on this potential?
Oh, you, yeah, I can, I, no, I didn't, but, you know.
No, uh.
I mean, it's just.
Normal conditions.
Yeah, what's this?
Oops, start dealing.
Are we comfortable moving forward tonight? Is the board thinking clearly still, hearing?
I think so, I mean, you know.
I'm okay.
Gwen asked if ten, we had to cut it twenty, cut it, quit at ten thirty, because she's, she's night owl. She's wide awake.
I was up at five, that's when I get up in the morning. This is a long day. I don't get to sleep in.
So.
Yeah, I would just say this approval shall be valid for a period of twelve years from today's date.
That's all you have to say?
That's all I'm going to say. Because in the regs, it says all approval shall be valid for a period of one year from the date of the meeting.
Okay.
That's what it says in the regs, so this says shall be valid for a period of twelve years.
They don't do anything.
Huh?
But if they don't do anything, well, that's, I'm not really happy with that. I'm just saying, I know they're here to build.
Yeah, that, I, yeah, exactly. I mean, the only reason that would happen is, you know, something bad happens.
Yeah, okay.
Outside of you and.
Yeah.
The world, and, yeah.
All right, so I, I definitely felt like, for me, I'd like to see a condition regarding the Bonnie Lane of butter, at eleven Bonnie Lane on that property line. Not comfortable with the proposed plan and, and as it sits on that line. And it's pretty fluid there. It sounds like there hasn't been direct communication, right?
We have tried, though.
Okay. But there hasn't been. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of hard during meetings.
After the meeting.
Right, but very accessible.
So I, I, that, I, we, I'd like to see that screening improved, and I'm not certain of the way to accomplish that. I'm not excited about giving in a butter money to resolve it. I'm not excited about requiring it to go on the butter's property because it's more feasible with the existing trees. So I guess on that regard, I'm looking to the applicant to make me more happy about that line, I guess. No better way to say it. I think you can improve the screening on that.
I, I'd really.
Yes.
Sure. Please do.
I really think we need to be on site with the homeowner.
Yeah.
And take a look at what can be done and what's the root structure there. I mean, you know what, what a forest is. Granted, you know, the wintertime pictures, I'm sure it's wide open. Summertime pictures are probably very dense. But it's, it's not just winter or summer, it's kind of a year-round thing they're looking for. And I think if there's a way to do the fence, that's getting as much as the neighbors that are much closer are getting. And if we can do some landscaping, then we can spot that in as well. But I think it's more a matter of seeing what's there.
Yeah.
I know the pictures are good, but, but they're, I think, physically going, and I'm happy to go with the planning board number. And as well as the homeowner.
Yeah, that's, I think, okay, thank you.
I don't know how to do that in an approval.
I know, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe you could have it, Mr. Sharple's with kind of meeting.
Yeah.
With the applicant.
I know, Dave doesn't like doing it.
No, I know.
Yeah, I, I don't like that.
We don't really like it to be, uh.
Yeah, you can't have too much.
Touchy feely, we kind of like to try to pin it down.
Well, if it was a, a meeting on site and there's an agreement amongst the homeowner and the applicant.
I think the homeowner's already expressed what they want.
That's always what's best for us as a board, because we're not going to live there.
The homeowner's expressed what they want. I've heard what they want, you've heard what they want, right? Do you need to hear it again?
No.
Well, what if he.
Do, okay. Can you go up and tell them what you want?
I, I, I think realistically, the fence, if we can put it.
Mm-hmm.
Is.
The best solution.
The best solution.
Okay.
It's not a live and growing solution, and it's not going to take care of thirty-five feet.
No. It's not my personal best solution, but I'm not living there either, so, and I'm not you, so.
Okay, so right now, the fence goes to about right, I'm sorry, can we put it, would you mind putting it on one each other house, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
There we are.
Thank you. So right now, I think the fence goes to about right here. Right here, probably, yeah, right there. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that in my head. So there aren't a lot of trees in here. There are, I can think of one maple in here, a lot of it's pretty just.
Like undergrowth?
Yeah, undergrowth, thank you. So.
No, actually.
No, I see the fence here, and again, the other option, I know they don't like, but would be to, to go along here, because I guess another concern we have is, we've protected that area over here, is this area protected here? Okay, so, but, I mean, you can actually go back right here, so. You know, either a fence along, again, your property line, because I don't want to give up, my backyard is postage stamp size as it is. Or if you wanted to go that way, along your edge of the woods.
All right, so I, I, I got an idea, hold on, hold on one sec. Can we just say, a fence to a certain endpoint, and my thought is just short of the wetlands? Because beyond that, I don't think it's offering you much screening. Trying to look at that angle, what is that end of your house, a garage?
This is actually, what's not shown here is my mother's, uh, addition.
Okay.
Which goes like, like right here.
All right, so she will have.
So there is no garage anymore.
Okay.
So my mother has an addition that goes a little bit here, and as far.
So they're going into the wetlands, if it goes the whole line.
It's an ADU.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'd be willing to add a row of trees behind Building One, and that way we're not, you know, we're staying out of the wetland.
Well.
But we'd be in the buffer.
Trees are.
But screening behind that building, behind the decks.
In this area? So put them kind of like along the tree line.
Yeah, and, and.
Is that?
Yeah, that, that was would be my preference, because it would.
Your preference is the trees, not a fence?
Pardon me?
Yeah.
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 And the reason why. Yeah, because people are naturally going to clear the lawn, you know what I mean? If I'm living back there, I'm going to clear space, and clear space, and clear space.
But in a condominium, they can't cut the trees, so it's, it's a little different. It's a hill than a house.
Tree.
And you're right, a house lawn could be clearing it right to the wetland. And then fences. But, so say we did those trees right there. You know, right where, where you had your hand in the first part, because we'd be in the wetland.
It's way behind the decks.
Yeah, behind the decks.
So, so just so I understand and you understand, are we talking right here? Because that big red dot's really hard to.
Right, it is, it is, and again.
It's a big fat dot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other fence ends to about right here? Again, I'm estimating, and then it would go, you know, something like that, again, but I'm not opposed to that way either.
So, so say we did. Absolutely. Fence goes to, say, that red tree, yep. And then the trees go, I didn't realize, white paper isn't so good. So the trees go like right along that, that line. Back here, wherever we can that we stay out of the wetland or the buffer.
Buffer, yeah.
Does that make sense?
And the same, and if.
You have the same trees that we did.
Right, and I, I would say the same height, you know what I mean? The other fence.
Okay, so eight-foot fence and then, uh, whatever height trees we used.
So, yeah, and again, I would love to see something like this, you know, so.
Evergreen, yep.
Yeah.
What's your address?
Eleven Bonnie Drive. And I'm going to speak to the other neighbors, too, it's like, ten-foot fence would be a lot better than eight-foot, you know? I'm not sure.
So the, so I want to be clear on this, we're talking about the fence going to where it is going already on the plan.
Yeah, it goes right there, right?
And that's already on the plan, so that's not changing.
Correct.
And they're adding trees along a line that Mr. Green just showed you.
Right, we have these here already. So we can just continue them to the end of that building.
Okay. And that'll make, that a satisfactory?
And a fence behind it?
No.
I just said, the fence stays as designed on the plan, is what he just described to you, that's why I'm making sure.
Okay, so I did, yeah, no, I was under the impression, yeah, I, I really want a fence. Do you want?
Well, I think they got to.
Fence or tree?
They've got to extend the fence as it stands now.
This is why we try to resolve this now?
Yes, no.
Where the red tree is, the second red tree, and then plant the trees from the second red tree to the end of.
Building One.
Building One. Yeah.
So there'd be no fence there?
No, the fence would end at the tree, it's either, we can't put, we're not sticking the fence. The trees are going to accomplish the objective.
Yes.
If you want the trees, we'll do the trees, if you want the fence, we'll do the fence. But we're talking about an area where you're asking for even larger trees.
Well, I'm assuming you're going to do some sort of, something in there.
My opinion is it improves both properties, so I'm not sure why we can't just do this. It's not that many trees. It's not that much space. I think the screening's what we're talking about. But it's, I think it helps, if I'm looking at living and building one, I don't want to look the other way either.
We're good with the trees.
Yeah. So can we be more specific on that at all? Trees? I've got some arborists in the room.
I think we can probably be specific if we just take a look at our.
Your landscape person can.
Yeah, I mean, couldn't we just say evergreen trees to be added along, along the existing wood line behind building one?
I think so. I think height matters, and count of trees actually matter.
Probably species.
I don't know what kind of soil you have back there. It's going to get southern, that southern light. I mean, I think you should talk to your landscape architect about that. Poor Jen doesn't want to have to.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, too. It wouldn't hurt to get her feedback before we actually propose a species.
I don't think you can do that without knowing what the soil is and, yeah, it's south, southern, southeast, west, western exposure.
Yeah, how much sun you need to get there. I mean, I came up with this, I mean.
I mean, evergreen, still an evergreen.
I said a constructed or living fence shall be shown on the plans between the length of building one and 11 Bonny Drive.
I like that.
Minimum, she said a minimum of eight feet. She, she added that height.
For a tree.
Okay, constructed or living fence. Minimum. Eight feet in height. Shall be shown on the final plans between the length of building one and 11 Bonny Drive. So that is. Length of building one is somewhere to here, you know, so here to there, the length of it. There is already a fence here, so it would be between this section and right there. Is that? Is that what the goal was?
Going to be, how do you monitor the, what defines how close they are together, or what defines a fence if we choose a living one? I mean, I don't want to have it just some.
A living fence, I usually look at it as, you know, it's opaque at like three to five years. I mean, you plant something, it's usually not, like, you know, and arborvitae, it's like, three to five years, arborvitae grow, you know, tremendously. Certain varieties, you know, two years, they'll, they'll be much bigger than they are when they're planted. So I guess it depends on the species and the spacing, that they grow and it's opaque, meaning you can't basically see through it from ground level up to high height at like three to five years.
Okay, so.
Somewhere in there.
If after five years, or three years, it doesn't meet these standards, what is my course of action?
There is a, we have a condition that any dead or dying vegetation shall be, landscape plans shall be maintained. Any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than fall and growing season, so. I mean, it should do it, and then if it, if it doesn't, it's probably dying, so it needs to be replaced.
Right, yeah, did that.
Yeah, and that's the condition of all of our approvals.
So your course of action would be that, bad case scenario happens, you come here and you talk to Doug Eastman or whoever's code enforcement officer. And say, hey, this was a condition of this approval, and this neighbor that went in next to me, it's not being satisfied, here's a couple pitchers, come out and see me. That's what you do.
My other question, when this had a topic.
Give it to the mic.
Oh, sorry. My other question, which I never thought of until Donna brought it up earlier, is lights on the back porch, what are, what are.
We've already gone through the lighting plan.
I know, but I did, I know you did, but I wasn't the back porch.
Okay, it's 11 o'clock at night. We've already gone through the lighting plan, and nothing's going to go off their neighborhood. Nothing's going to shine beyond the property line. If you look at the building, you'll probably see a light, but if you look through your backyard, not at their property, you won't.
It should end at the tree line. I think the spillover ends right at the tree line in back of the buildings, right? It's not, because they can't.
Okay, no, again.
Good question. It's hard, these are long meetings. But we're trying to get it shorter now, so.
I know that, but it's important.
Why you're up there.
This is my luck, my.
Why you're here, I understand.
It's your biggest investment.
So that works for you?
I'm not happy with it, but I, it seems what you're, I'm going to get from you.
That's not, that's not an answer. I'm not going to live with that.
I, I.
I know happy is, they don't do anything, and it's woods for the next hundred years.
I'm not even.
But I'm saying, what else, what are you looking for?
I, I said, I would love a fence. I would love an actual fence.
And I think he gave you that option.
I don't.
Trees or fence?
Trees or fence, is what I heard.
So again, so where would the fence be?
On your property line.
Between the length of, between your property and the length of building one.
Somewhere.
Somewhere.
So, I would be happy with, yeah, I would be happy with.
Length of building one, not the whole property line.
So, so if, would you be guys going that way?
No. He's not going to go that way.
They could go either way.
But I guess to length of building one, I.
I know. He already said they couldn't do it, the length of your property.
Yeah, an actual fence.
The living fence.
The living fence would be behind building one, right?
I'm sorry, we'll be getting resolved.
On the lighting plan.
Elf, lighting plan?
Yeah.
What is it?
L3?
It's L3. L3, L3.
L3, I didn't hear you. Good luck reading it, because it's so tiny. I needed a mic, magnifying glass.
That's what I was saying, I want a fence. Yeah, but there.
Fence or trees? Your mom wanted the fence.
Yeah, and I was for a fence.
So just the fence. My mom only wanted the fence. The property owner only wanted the fence.
I'm the property owner.
My wife. She came and told us.
My wife and I are the property owners. That's fine.
Trees.
And, but, but another, again, you guys are forgetting that this isn't complete. She has, her, her house is right here.
And this distance is close, and this distance is a whole lot.
Again, that's why I thought that, that's why I thought, over here would work to the edge of building one. But if you're doing a fence and just stopping halfway across my yard, that's so.
What should we prefer, fence all the way to the corner?
I would say either.
I would, it's a wetland there.
Yeah, I think the thought on that line would be go to the wetland.
We could go to the wetland, or we could do the fence wherever it is and the trees.
So where is, where is the wetland?
Right there.
Right there.
So, it goes.
Right where your hand is, don't move.
Okay, well, it's hard to screen one. So, but it has it right here. So I guess my question is, does it go this way, does it go that way?
We didn't go on your property to mark the wetland.
It's where it intersects the property line.
Pardon me, where does, that's what I'm, the question I'm asking, where does it intersect the property line?
Dave, can you show them?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't go off the property. But, but also it's in the buffer.
Yeah.
Also, it's in the buffer and.
Right.
Technically, we're going through the buffer from.
Yep.
From, from this point right here to here, this is, this is buffer and this is wetland. So. Yeah, the trees behind the building, I think, provide screening. The trees behind the building.
I think they got to look at it together on the site.
Whichever you want, we can do. The trees will offer you, will offer you as the homeowner, more protection in the long run, because they're going to keep growing.
Yep.
And at some point, probably fairly soon, I mean, 10 years soon, they'll have blocked anything on the decks, and they'll keep going.
Yeah.
I think that's accurate.
Yeah.
If it were me, I'd go for the living fence, but it's everybody's personal choice.
Yep.
He's offering you one or the other.
Okay, but when I hear. Or, or trees, my concern is, are these trees, the vegetation here is still going to be protected, or it's still going to be, is staying there?
Yes.
Hell, yes.
This is enhancing it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I, because I don't want to see, you know, that, that'd be my biggest concern, you know, if we do the living fence. It's that, and then this cleared out and it's just.
See the wavy line in back of the buildings, the zigzaggy line? The bottom, the inside edge closest to you is the, is the limit of cutting. So they can't, they're not cutting anything.
Yep, you're on it, yep.
That dark squiggle is the limit.
The squiggly line.
The squiggle line.
So can we get the fence extended to the point, to the limit of cutting?
I think the.
If it's not already, again, if it's not already, I'm not sure.
So that seems like it's right at the corner of between the second and third unit. What, where is your.
The limit of cutting.
Landscape picture.
It ends a little bit back from that.
Okay.
So is that a reasonable request to have the fence go to the limit where you can cut and then have?
Or just.
Twenty feet.
I have to see the other picture.
It's like 20 feet.
Okay. So we'll go to.
Put the fence.
We'll go to the, to the tree line, right there. Go to the tree line right here. Yep, the limit of cutting, right, and then we will do the trees to the end of building one. Is that building one?
Yes.
Yes.
You should know the numbers by now.
So you've got a little bit of fence and some trees.
Yeah, no, okay, no, no.
Are we happy?
I am happy, and I guess if we can just somehow close that little spot there, too.
I think this, I think there's already trees planted.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, I guess I would like to add, make sure that that's part of the, part of the.
Paige, can you put to the landscape plan, please?
There's one tree. Oh, actually, it's more than one. Three trees.
So we'll go right off the end of that blue one?
No.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
So that'll, that'll take it right there, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. It's a reason we try to do it this way. It's painful for everyone involved, but.
Oh, is that why?
But it's resolved.
No, 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 I, I was getting nervous that this was.
You're not meeting down the road, it's not.
Yep, yep.
Up in the air.
That's what I was trying to.
No misunderstandings.
Was, can we make sure this?
Yes, understood.
Thank you for.
That'll be a condition.
Absolutely.
Thank you for working with.
I mean, this is a big impact on your life. I mean, you know, it is, so.
Yep. Okay.
I just got fired as vice chair, by the way.
No, no, no.
Wait till the next election, you're out.
It's coming up next month.
No, you're still in, buddy. Okay. Did you get that, David?
All I, all I did was the same condition I just said, as discussed at the meeting.
Yep.
Added that.
Okay.
Constructed a living fence, a minimum of eight feet in height, shall be shown on the final plans between the length of building one and 11 Bonny Drive, as discussed at.
Yeah, the fence got extended, too. The fence got extended. You need to have that in there.
No, that meant as discussed at the meeting. The fence, I got a constructed fence.
No, if you read that, you can read that as the living fence, the living screening as discussed at the meeting.
Also, a constructed fence is in there, too.
But you had either or.
Then and.
And, yes, please.
Please.
Constructed.
Please, sir.
A constructed and a living fence.
Dean's going to start right.
I'm in.
I know that.
Got it.
Dean's trying to get out of this board now. All right. All right, so I'm going to make a motion, and David, you're going to help me through some conditions, and I, we haven't discussed this as a board as much as we do sometimes. So if there's anybody that has anything else, please, this is your time, so. I move at the request of Green and Company Planning Board Number 24, Planning Board Case Number 24-8 for multi-family site plan approval. Be approved with the following conditions, as being read by David Sharples.
You want me to read them all?
Please.
Yes, please, those are so good to hear.
One, electronic ASBIL plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format and in NAD 1983 state plan. New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the meeting. The stormwater pollution prevention plan, if applicable, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Four, the annual operations and maintenance report in the stormwater operations and maintenance manual revised March 15, 2025 shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January 31. This requirement shall be in our going condition of approval and included in the condominium documents. Five, all comments in the review letter from Underwood Engineers dated March 26, 2025 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner and town engineer or their designee prior to signing the final plans. Six, all condominium documents, including the decorrelation and bylaws, shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. Condominium docs to include maintenance requirements for the pervious pavement and all of the stormwater practices shown on the plans and other applicable conditions of this approval. Review of the condominium documents by the town's attorney shall be at the applicant's expense. Seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid, but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Eight, all landscaping shown on plans shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than the fall and growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. Nine, all, all lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded, so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties or right-ofways. Ten, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP's middle must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. Eleven, these I got from last meetings. The use of the proposed sidewalk from the residential units to Portsmouth Avenue shall be unrestricted for use by the residents of the project. The intent of this condition is to ensure that any lease for the front portion of the lot will not impede pedestrian access to the sidewalk. Twelve, no building shall be closer than 20 feet to the side property lines, and this should be reflected on the final plans. Thirteen, as agreed by the applicant, the applicant shall provide a $20,000 contribution to be used toward the improvement of vehicular traffic flow from the site to Portsmouth Ave, that includes at a minimum, the signalized intersection at Greens Hill Road and Portsmouth Ave. This contribution shall be made when submitting for a building permit. Fourteen, as agreed by the applicant, construction hours shall be limited to between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. daily with only inside work on Sundays. Fifteen, on the final plans, bike racks shall be added to Phase Two, to the satisfaction of the town planner. What was that, fifteen, so sixteen, a living fence, no, a constructed and a living fence. A minimum of eight feet in height shall be shown on the final plans between the length of building one and 11 Bonny Drive, as discussed at the meeting. And then this approval shall be valid for a period of 12 years from today's date. Does that cover everything?
Did we want to have them just kind of review the trail with Kristen?
Can.
Let's do that, just.
What does he want to say?
Have Kristen Murphy just look at the trail.
Yes.
Did you get in the thing about the snow removal and the berm piece?
Oh, yeah.
That just covered by the waiver?
No, no, oh, no, that was conditional use.
It was in the CUP.
We'd have to put it in here as well. It's okay where it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's in, that was the CUP condition, so that's a condition of approval, too.
Dave, on the ASBIL, how would that be structured, it's prior to CO? So we have to provide the ASBIL for the Phase One, prior to CO of any of the townhouses, and then Phase Two would be separate?
Yeah.
Okay, just confirming.
Yep.
Dave, I think this.
Yeah, we would work with you on that.
I think this was covered, but the page eight, number nine, about the right-of-way. Was that covered?
What?
In the letter, page eight, number nine, about the right-of-way along Portsmouth Ave being transferred.
To DOT.
Yes.
No, I thought we would. They've committed to working with us on that. We want to check into that, is why the state actually didn't take it, and do we want it?
Oh. Maybe we don't.
I'm not, I'm not saying we don't, and I'm not trying to insinuate anything, but I'm just like, wait a minute, I'd, I'd like a little more research into that before, I would say.
Okay.
I think they're willing to work with us, right?
Yeah.
I, I talked to them about it, I mean.
Okay.
I think we could get it anyway, other ways, but, you know.
I understand that, I just thought that that was something that, okay.
Yeah, I didn't put it in there for that, but I, it's up to the board.
The deed restrictions covered, too, on the land on the other side of the wetlands, already, in the application?
Yeah, that's on the plan.
Doesn't need to be.
And it's in the CUP conditions of approval.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't think we need to be duplicative and have the same conditions for the CUP, so.
So how does the last condition read about Kristen? Kristen would be.
Oh, I didn't write that yet. Okay, uh, the proposed pedestrian trail?
Mm-hmm.
Shall be reviewed by-
Very good, yep.
Conservation and Sustainability Planner? Prior to signing the final plans.
Good idea.
Is that good? I'll read it back.
Yep.
The proposed pedestrian trail shall be reviewed by the Conservation and Sustainability Planner prior to signing the final plans.
Yep.
How about approved, as a review?
Does she have a quote on it, sorry?
Yeah, I, I, I left that out.
All right.
But, you can add it, but.
I think that-
I think if she makes reasonable suggestions, they'll follow it, um, you know, I think, yeah.
They, they agreed to look at the landscaping with regard to where the snow storage was proposed, and it's in their interest, I don't know that you need to put it in the conditions, because it's kind of in their interest to check that, otherwise, they're gonna end up replanting.
Yeah, and it kind of goes along with the condition for the conditional use as well, so we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay, are we happy with the motion and all of the conditions? We haven't had many conditions, it's a long time.
I guess it's my motion, so I'm satisfied with the conditions, I need a second.
Do we need, yeah, I need a second, please.
I have a second.
Oh, Dean, thank you, you got a second. Okay. Uh, we'll do the roll call thing, so Jen, let's start with you.
No.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Ooh.
Tie.
One, three to three.
Three, three. Oh, boy.
What's the rules there?
I don't know, what is the rule on that?
The motion failed.
They can revise the motion, do a different motion. Yep.
Well, I guess, at this point, since I put the motion forward, um, it probably behooves someone who voted against it to discuss that.
Project meets the criteria set forth by the town.
My problem is the length of years, so I can speak to that, I, I'm fine with going 10 years, but not 12.
I'm sorry, I can't understand, is what you're saying?
You can't hear me, I mean, I said, I'm fine with going 10 years, but I was not fine with going 12.
I still did not hear all that, I'm sorry.
She wasn't comfortable with a 12-year approval.
Oh, 12-year approval.
She would be comfortable with a 10-year approval, correct?
Thank you.
I don't know, she's just having trouble here.
No, that's-
So the same motion, with the same conditions, except-
Except Dean Ma-
This approval shall be valid for a period of 10 years from today's date.
Okay, so, the reasoning for 12 was, the lease that they're in now is a four-year, roughly four years, there's a tenant-held option to make that nine, and if they can't do anything, potentially for nine years, to me, 10 isn't gonna really give them enough time to-
Won't it give them a year?
Satisfy it.
Nope, it, yeah, remember, and I think it does, because-
Give them a year.
It's not completion of the project, it's simply start-up.
Okay.
So if they start, and they get a building permit by the 10th year, then they won't need to come back for an extension, because they'll be working, and they'll have on the automatic 18 months-
Yeah.
And possible more extensions, so that'll bring them to 12 years any.
Okay.
Yeah, 10 years would be all right.
That makes sense, to me, that makes sense.
10 years would be all right.
Does anybody else want to speak about it at this point? Any further discussion?
About that particular issue?
Any issue?
Yeah.
Any issue?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think I would agree about the too-long thing, um, I, I just have a hard time approving a plan that, like, I, I know the conditional use permit was approved, but I don't feel comfortable with it, so.
Thank you.
I think there's, it's too much of an impact for this site, I think it's, and the, the big issue for me is the pavement and the wetland buffers.
I didn't get the last piece of that?
Pav, excessive pavement in the wetland buffers.
Okay.
I think the spirit of the month is limited parking, I know it's not, we don't have like a maximum number of parking spaces, I don't believe, but this doesn't, to me, follow the spirit of the month, to provide four parking spaces per unit, on average.
Mm-hmm.
And it, and the fact that it impacts the wetlands so heavily, I just don't feel comfortable approving it.
My feelings, exactly. But-
Okay, so, do one of you voted against my motion, want to make a motion?
I mean, it would leave it up to me, because neither of the two are-
They can, they can make a motion to deny the application.
Um, yeah, I mean, I just, I know, I don't think, I think that's gonna be a waste of time, so I'm not gonna do that.
Okay. So I'm going to move to use the same, I'm sorry, it's getting late, terms, is that good?
Conditions, yeah.
Conditions, thank you, simple words, it's not coming, um, and for a period of 10 years.
Dave? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Dean, moved and seconded. Are we ready to vote again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's go the other direction. How was your vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, 4-2. Motion carries.
Can I, oh, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Um, we never discussed, and this wouldn't have been a condition, because it's not something that the applicant can deal with, but I, we had, we never talked about, uh, stop signs within Barney Drive Haven, um, and I, I would like to propose that we request that whoever DPW reviewed it-
It's a town function, so we should-
It's a town function, but I think if we encourage that to be reviewed-
Can we just ask Dave to-
Yeah, and were you at the last meeting?
Yeah, I thought we talked about it.
We did.
Were you at the last meeting, Wes?
Me, no.
That's, okay, we, we talked about that quite a bit, and-
And I brought up to the end of the meeting.